Thank you, Sam. Good evening. I'm Lee Cross and welcome to the December 14, 2023, meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just watched National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation last weekend, and they absolutely say amen at the end of it. She and I have always wondered where I got that, and I found it. We've done the Pledge of Allegiance. The next item on our agenda is roll call. I believe six of us are here, and Trustee Hamill tells me he's in the parking lot. The next item on our agenda is awards and recognition, and I will turn that over to President Dr. Baum.
All right. Well, thank you so much. It's my privilege, as always, to let you have some time with one of our students, and I think tonight will be another enjoyable conversation. So I'd invite Liz to come to the podium. This is Liz Hernandez. And Liz, we're all yours.
Hello, everybody. My name is Liz Hernandez. I am an international student from Honduras, a place where only about one out of 10 students have the opportunity to attend college. Believe me, it is truly an honor to stand here before you. I began my academic journey here at JCC in the fall of 2021 and will be graduating in spring of 2024 with my degree in liberal arts. Being an international student has proven to be a challenging, yet rewarding ride, a journey of adapting, learning, and embracing new experiences, opportunities for learning and development that will go beyond the classroom and have been made possible by JCC-friendly environment and diverse community. In addition to my study, I actively contribute to campus student life ambassador and serve as a parliamentarian in Student Senate. I also share the Rules and Conduct Committee. Choosing JCC was beneficial decision. It not only offers academic opportunities for international students, but also fosters a sense of community. Here at JCC, I had the privilege of meeting incredible individuals who had made a huge impact on my life. A significant part of my personal and professional growth unfolds at work under the guidance of an extraordinary leader and boss, Cassie Jordan. Since day one, Cassie has been a mentor who constantly pushed me to exceed my limits and strongly believe in my full potential. I'm thrilled to embark onto the next phase of my journey and career pathway, eager to continue learning and growing new things, looking forward to challenges and opportunities that lay ahead as further expanding my skill and knowledge, at which I am strongly committed not to only advancing in my career, but also embracing continuous learning as the foundation of both professional and personal growth. Here's to an exciting adventure and discoveries that the future holds for me. Thank you.
Any questions for our students?
What are your plans after? Go for it.
Go ahead.
What are your plans after graduating?
I am, as an international student, have the opportunity to work off-campus legally for one year. I plan to work and I plan to save that money to be able to transfer for a four-year.
Thank you.
Trustee Muse. I was trying to figure out, how do you get here from Honduras? How did you first learn about Johnson County Community College, and why did you say, I think I can make it there?
Yeah, so I have my grandmother, she, my dad's mom, she's here. And I was getting my bachelor's back home. My sister was the one that, you know, she actually applied for me, for the both of us, and I was able to get my visa approved, and she wasn't, so that's how I ended up here at JCC.
Go ahead.
Trustee Smith Ever.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you and welcome. We are so glad to hear from you and have you here. I wondered what are the biggest top two, three challenges for you when you came? What were the biggest things that were different than you thought they would be or were much harder than you anticipated they would be?
I would say that all the classes are in English. Back home, they're all in Spanish. That would be one of the top three. Adaptability in general, not knowing anybody here besides my grandmother and two uncles. And being able to know that you have resources, that there's people that support you here on campus, and when you first get here, you're not aware of them. Thank you so much.
Trustee Reel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, the entire time you were speaking, the word in my head was wow. You are incredibly articulate, young lady, and I found myself wondering, your English is impeccable. As a matter of fact, you're better spoken than I am on most days.
Thank you.
How did you become so proficient in the English language? Did you start learning at a very young age?
Yes, I started in nursery, which is about, I think I was three years old when I started speaking, learning to speak English back home. I did it back home.
Well, you are incredibly well-spoken, not only in the English language, but just in the way you speak and present yourself, so best of luck. You're going to go far, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Do you have anything? I will say that my youngest brother that I'm closest to in my family, he met a woman from Venezuela who, honest to God, her older sister helped enroll her in Johnson County Community College. And they're now in Miami and have a daughter. So I'm proud that you've continued the tradition of international students attending the school and wish her proud of your success, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. And then next, I'll turn it over to Dr. McLeod.
It's not often that I get the opportunity to really do the fun parts of my job, and the fun parts often involve working with our faculty and staff and students. One of the things that drew me towards Johnson County so many years ago was how impressive the people here are, the work that they do, the way in which they comport themselves to really forward a top-notch, world-class education in a place that people don't often look. Kansas is considered flyover country, and having lived in Missouri first, I heard every bad thing there was to hear about Kansas because of all the Mizzou grads who can't stand KU. And yet, at the same time, I came here recognizing that this was a place that had very high standards, held students to very high standards, and had a faculty that was capable of bringing to the table knowledge and skills that are often reserved for the university level. And tonight, we get the opportunity to honor one such faculty member. One of the first folks to greet me when I accepted the job as Chief Academic Officer here was Dr. Terry Easley-Geraldo. She and I had the opportunity to meet and talk about kind of the future of Johnson County, about what we did for our students, as she was part of the leadership of our Faculty Association at that time, and also was part of a group of faculty that wanted to greet me and understand my philosophy. And tonight, we get the opportunity to honor her because her work has been recognized on a national level. Dr. Easley-Geraldo has done work across the spectrum of students in communications at this institution and internationally, and has been a hub for some of our connected international coursework that works with students in Russia, in Central and South America, connecting us to sister schools, and allowing our students who maybe might not have the financial ability to go and see the world, but to connect to the world in a different way because they are able to make friends, not just pen pals in the old sense, but classmates, folks who are working with them synchronously and asynchronously, sharing life experiences, writing papers, giving presentations that really afford them an opportunity to talk about themselves and their experiences. She has helped globalize this campus, and she has helped to really inculcate for a lot of younger faculty what it means to be a professor at Johnson County. And this year, she has been honored by the National Communication Association as the 2023 Michael and Suzanne Osborne Community College Outstanding Educator. And so I will cede the floor and welcome her to the podium to say a few words and hope that you all will honor Dr. Terry Easley-Geraldo.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod, for the very kind words, and thank you all for having me today. I think back in September, when I found out, I was like, this isn't real. When's the email going to come that says, "Just kidding"? But now that the plaque is in my office, it's actually real. So I had the opportunity there to speak about my career, and one of the things that I spoke about was how Johnson County was my place to grow up. I was hired as a 23-year-old, fresh out of a master's program, to resurrect a functionally dead debate team. And I've been here for 19 years, and to think about all the growth and opportunities I have had has been because of the support of everyone here, the opportunities that we have. My four-year colleagues are quite jealous of many of the things I get to do, but they're like, wow, we don't even get the opportunity to do that. When I first came here, I didn't think I would still be here, you know, more than a couple of years. I thought, oh, I'll go do that and go somewhere else. But I've stayed here because I fell in love with the students, with the opportunity, with the college, and being at a community college is so important. I ended my speech at NCA by talking about the stigma of community colleges, and that was really awesome, to get that platform, to talk about what a great institution we are and why it's so important that we have community colleges. So thank you, and thank you for the time today.
You know I'm going to say something, right? Terry, oh, those many years ago, when we first met, when you were, in your words, just trying to figure out life. I've kind of watched your career unfold over the years, and it's been really wonderful to see what you've achieved. Thank you so much for deciding to stay. The contributions that you've made in so many different ways on this campus are, just can't be applauded enough, and I truly mean that. It's been fun to watch your career develop, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Smith Ever.
I wanted to extend my congratulations, but also say that every, for those of us that watch you, we know this isn't your first award. This most certainly will not be your last, and how lucky we are because every time you're presented with an award, you make us look good and you help highlight this institution and what makes it so special. So thank you, because really, it's a gift to us, getting to celebrate you and allowing you that long creativity and ability to do things in all these different worlds that you are in and see your passions out in all the different ways that you have. So thank you for the investment you've made here, because I know that the investment we've made in you has come back to help us threefold, so thank you.
Trustee Reel.
You said when you first started that you didn't think that you'd be here for so long, and time flies when you're having fun. But what are the three things that have kept you here that you love about it, or what would you tell a new faculty member who has come to JCCC?
So that's a great question. So the three things, first, my students. The diversity that I get in the classroom for everything just makes everything so much more fun and enjoyable, and they learn from each other because of the diversity that's in the classroom. So that, the support of my colleagues. I remember, Trustee Reel, I came and watched you teach, like, the first or second year, and I said, can I come watch you, because I'm still learning? And so I had the opportunity to, and I still do, go watch people teach and continue to learn and be challenged. And then just the opportunities we have here, both for students and faculty, I think, are amazing. And we, as we hire new faculty, I always tell them, you know, there's a reason why people are here for a long time, and those are, I think, the three main reasons. Thank you.
I will say, Professor, first of all, let me say thank you to Dr. McLeod for raising this award, bringing it to our attention. Congratulations to you, and then really thank you for addressing the stigma of the community college movement. It frustrates me. I can tell you, without naming names, there are people in my personal and professional circles that don't understand why I serve here or why this place means so much to me. And it's really not mine to explain. I always reference Bill Gates. I say I shook his hand. It's completely unverifiable. I really can't remember at the 2013 JCCT convention in Seattle. But to hear Bill Gates onstage, on a couch, in a conversational manner, talking about why he and his then-wife Melinda, talking about why the Gates Foundation invested in community colleges, and that even if in our remedial courses that they only have a 10% success rate, that that was the best thing going. It was the best way to help adults, to teach them and help them to do for themselves and make them productive, tax-paying citizens so we can all do this and live in a civil society. So thank you for contributing to that, and congratulations to your award. To you for your award, excuse me.
Thank you.
Without embarrassing him, I'll note for the record, Trustee Hamill is now in attendance, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. The next item on our agenda is the open forum section, and I'll read this as I've done for two years, and someone else can do it later. The open forum section of the board agenda is the time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes, please, unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes in order to be recognized. Individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting, and when addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to maintain, remain at the podium and should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise a subject of the review of review by the college or board. Are there any registered speakers this evening? There are no registered speakers at tonight's meeting, and I do want to note, used to be in my heard statements, do we still have a Zoom option?
We do not.
No Zoom option, okay. So decisions are made by those who show up. At any rate, the next item on our agenda is the board reports section, and we'll begin with our Student Senate report by Apuna Gonzalez. Good evening.
Good evening. So the Senate Board Report for this year, the last General Assembly meeting was on Monday, December 4th. Our next GA will be next semester in January 29th on Monday from 1:00 to 2:00 in MTC 234. An event that we just funded was for BSU. It was the Black-owned Business Expo, and we funded them $400. In total, this semester, we have funded $18,429. We just concluded our JCC gives event. We are right now working on delivering gifts to people, but we were able to help 11 families, which was 47 different individuals. We had 141 tags on the tree. Senate purchased 54 of those tags, which was $1,774. In total, we fundraised a total of $2,439. $1,730 was from Shop JCC. $642 was from a bake sale, and then 175 was donated from Rebecca Gold Key's jewelry sale. And then I just want to thank you guys for all your support for Senate and the school.
Thank you. Any questions for Apuna?
I just wanted to offer congratulations. Thank you for being, for leading through your first semester. You'll be here next semester, is that right? Okay. We look forward to it, and good luck on finals.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Apuna?
Thank you.
Apuna, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a report by our college lobbyist, a gentleman from Shawnee, Mr. Dick Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are now less than a month away from the beginning of the 2024 legislative session, and leadership continues to travel the state and talk about what a rapid session they're expecting. They're expecting to get in, get some work done, and go home, mainly because it's an election year, and they want to be able to get out and start some campaigning. And so I'll talk a little bit about what some of the talk has been, as leadership has been making their way around the state here in just a minute, because the governor's also been making her way around the state, and there's some different priorities. We've got administrative priorities from the governor's administration, and we've got some legislative priorities, and that's going to make for an interesting session if we're going to do it quick and get out of here. The biggest issue, and I listed what the high point, top point issues are going to be in the report, and I don't plan to go through all of those, but I'm happy to answer questions if you have them about those. But the real big issue is going to be tax policy and tax cuts. And so, and again, there is not agreement on how we achieve those, and I've been talking about those for the past coming months, hopefully to keep it high on your mind, because that really is going to be what drives the conversation into Pica this coming session. We're hearing from leadership that there's going to be, and they've been telling folks this as they travel around. We had the Senate President and the House Speaker in Olathe at their Chamber Legislative Lunch earlier this week, and they're telling folks, they've been telling folks now for several weeks, that they're going to have a tax bill out, passed, and to the governor's desk within the first week or so of the legislative session. That's aggressive. I think it can happen. I think it's going to be a repackaged version of what was passed in a prior session, so that makes it a little bit more easy to do, but we'll get that out of the way. We'll see what happens. I think there are votes to, if there should be a veto, I think there's votes to override that veto. So we'll see what happens, and we're talking about the flat tax. We're talking about a number of the items that were packaged with that particular policy change or recommendation last session. Property tax is still going to be a conversation. We have that constitutional amendment out there that the Senate passed that the House knows nothing about. I've attended several different legislative gatherings in preparation. I mean, they're going on everywhere as folks get ready to come back to Topeka, all the chambers, all the local units of government are having their different events, and the House really doesn't know anything about it. And someone said very wisely, really, they're not concerned about the valuations. That's what the constitutional amendment would do, would be to cap property valuations at 4% annually. Folks aren't really concerned about their valuation, they're concerned about the property tax. I realize that the two somewhat are tied, but not necessarily when it comes to budgeting. And so that's going to be an interesting conversation if it unfolds in that fashion as the House learns a little bit more about what that constitutional amendment looks like. Still going to be lots of talk about the local LAVTRF. I always forget what R stands for, but it's a transfer of state general fund dollars back to local units of government in exchange for a reduction in the mill levy. We'll see. It's part of that larger tax conversation. I just don't know where we're at with that right now. Legislative leadership says it's not going to happen. Democrats, the governor's office, they are very much pushing for that particular issue as well. We'll see if that actually provides some relief once you combine all the other tax policy discussions that are going on. There's about $2.8 billion to spend, and so some of that has to be taken into consideration if we're looking at cutting taxes or if we're looking at reshaping tax policy. Sales tax on groceries at the state level comes off in January altogether, so again, that's revenue that the state had been getting at a stepped-down pace that it will not see. And so that all plays into what happens in two or three years out, and it's not a result of the food sales tax, but the surpluses that we're enjoying right now, we will not see in two years. And so I think that that's the long vision that needs to be taken as these policies are being debated in the State House, but it's not always a long view that we take. Sometimes it's about the win today instead of what happens tomorrow or down the road. The administration's priority is Medicaid expansion. In the same fashion that the Speaker and the Senate President have been traveling the state, talking about budgets and tax policy and priorities, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, some of her cabinet-level folks have been traveling the state, talking about Medicaid expansion. They have really ramped up their efforts in the past couple of weeks specifically, and they've been going to the same places that House and Senate leadership have been going. We'll see. I'm not sure that it happens. I think that there are conversations going on behind the scenes with leadership about what looks reasonable, what can happen. Those same conversations are going on also with regard to what is acceptable with regard to tax policy. So I really think there is an effort going on that a lot of us don't see, and you certainly don't read or hear about in the newspaper or see on the news, with regard to trying to find a way to make things work in Topeka. I think the other, we're not going to see a lot of social issues, but those that might be considered in that arena that we will see stem from hearings that we had last year related to childcare and some of the regulations. Again, those issues impact campus. I think there'll be some talk about homelessness across the communities and what some of the local regulations may or may not look like. Not exactly sure what that, there was a special committee this summer, and I'm still not sure what those recommendations are going to look like coming from that committee. And then election security issues. Most folks in Kansas think that we have fair and safe elections, but with what has happened to the courts recently with regard to some of the online sabotage and what has happened to some health facilities around the state, and I think people are on high alert to what's going on with that. And so I've listed in my notes, technology security separately. That's not something that we typically spend a lot of time talking about in Topeka, and we certainly don't spend a lot of time budgeting for it. Last year, community colleges got $250,000 each. That's different on a campus like this than it might be in a campus elsewhere in the state. And so as sort of a stepping off point with regard to that, when the Speaker and the Senate President were here earlier this week in Olathe, one of the comments that was made, and I've been talking about some of the plans that leadership may or may not have for the way we fund community colleges or the way the accessibility exists across the state, one of the comments was made in that room, and it wasn't a negative comment towards the college, but it was very on point in that Senate President indicated, you have a Johnson County Community College here that is able to raise quite a bit of dollars based on the mill levy in Johnson County. That looks very different in the other 17 counties. So the fact that there is a, being called out in that aspect, again, not being negative, but that is an awareness that exists at the state level that we need to make sure that we're staying on top of our game when we're in Topeka, and that will be one of my chief focuses when the legislature convenes on January 8th. So they'll be gaveling in on January 8th, and the funding games will begin. Like I said, it's an election year, and so we're going to have a lot of things that go on in Topeka that maybe never are intended to be passed or signed into law, but they make for great campaign statements or postcards to be mailed out either for or against somebody. And so that's kind of what's going to go down come January 8th. If it all goes according to plan, will be done late in April, I think, if not very early in May. Last year, if I recall, we did not even do a full 90-day session. It was just short of 90 days. So that's what the Speaker has been pledging, and I think they intend to make good on that promise. So let me stop there and see if there's any questions, or if there was anything else that was covered in the report that I'm able to answer or find you an answer.
Any questions for Mr. Carter?
I don't have any questions, but I would like you to, or I'd like to at least share that in part of the recap from KCC. We were made aware that we have a new advocate. Sue Peterson is our new lobbyist, who will be working with you and Jessica and Heather Morgan. So there's a team of four this year to make sure that meetings are all attended to. I think sometimes they find, you know, duplicate meetings going on at the same time, and you just can't spread yourself thinly enough. So I was encouraged to see that we have another lobbyist coming to help support too, so.
She'll be a great addition to the team.
I knew you would.
Decades of higher education experience.
Absolutely. Thank you. She's from K-State.
That was my question, so that's.
She was K-State.
So K-State is bringing her on?
No, 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 no. We have hired her from KCC. Yeah, she just retired from K-State earlier this year, but she'd been with K-State 30-some-odd years, I think. She's.
And she was with the Hayden administration prior to that and worked when he was Speaker of the House, so yeah, she's been around Kansas politics for a long time.
Question, Mr. Chair, is it okay? Was, when does the governor's budget come out, and have we made any lobbying efforts to ask for more funding? I know in the last couple of years, she's really given minimal changes to our line in that budget, and I wondered if we had tried to meet with her to.
Yeah, so the team that Heather comprises, Heather has met with the governor's office and with her education staffer. They have talked about the budget priorities for the system, for the community college system. We're asking for exactly what we had last year. There are some enhancements that we'd like to see. One in particular would be for additional computer security, IT security, to continue to build on what was made available last year. But that meeting has happened, and we think. But that, that meeting has happened, and we think, although we haven't seen a date, we're hearing also that the governor plans to, it may be Tuesday on the 9th, that she may deliver the State of the State, which is then when we see her budget recommendations, her administration's budget recommendations. And then we'll spend the rest of that week in the Budget Committee, talking about what's contained in the budget. And usually it takes us even longer than that. It takes us about two full weeks to kind of really figure out where all the dollars are, because there's, there's a lot of ways to, to place dollars in a budget, so.
Trustee Muzel.
I, I have to take my last opportunity to speak against a, an artificial cap on property values. A 4% constitutional limit on appraised values does this. I live in my house for 10 years, and it goes up 4% a year. My neighbors went up 4% a year, but Dawn buys it in year 10, and the actual fair market value has gone up 50%. Dawn pays that 50%, and now her tax, her appraised value is her fair market value that she bought it for. Mine is tens of thousands less than that. And we're both in equal houses, paying property taxes to our schools, our county, our libraries, and that does nothing to make anything fair or uniform. It is a pure political symbolism, and if you talk to people and you find out that they think it sounds good, I'm, just all I want to do is educate you to how unfair that becomes to anybody who builds a new house, who buys a new business, or who buys a house and, and is taxed on their fair market value, while me, I'm only taxed at 4% a year, even though my value may be going up 8% a year. Property taxes are a problem. That is a solution offered that is not in any way helpful to taxpayers, and it's not fair.
Trustee Muzel, if I may ask you, wouldn't that also be, it occurs to me, be restraint on alienation? It would prohibit people from perhaps putting their properties on the market? They're just going to stay at that lower tax rate?
I would assume it would have an effect on when people mark, sell their homes and try to go buy another one. Just like now, mortgage rates are causing people to stay in their homes longer because they have a 3% rate and they don't want to pay seven and a half. So all of those economic factors are in, in play, but they, at least now with fair market values on homes, you are each taxed on your fair market value, not some artificially-depressed value set by constitution because it's politically achievable.
Any other questions for Dick? Dick, I have a few things, if I may. You mentioned in your comments on page two that certain legislative leaders will keep the local ad valorem tax reduction fund at the top of their discussion. I don't remember you touching on that in your remarks.
So that's going to be part of the larger tax conversation. Democrat House members, Democrat leadership has come out in favor of having LAVTR being one of their, one of their priorities for the session. So that will be, and again, that's the transfer of state general fund back to local units of government. You know, when you sit down and look at it, I think even if you go through the revenue-neutral rate process, which we do, we have always had the budget hearings, we've always publicized any, any increase that, that we intend to have, and you hold two hearings, I think, when it comes to that. I think you could be better off, I, I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the transfer rate is. It's a formula-driven transfer back to, back to local units of government. You might be better off just with the ability to use the budget, budgeting process as it is right now. That, I mean, that, that's just going to be one of the conversations that occurs, and so that will be one of the things that we're following all the way through, is that LAVTR transfer.
Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot or even advocate one way or the other. I just didn't understand what it meant, and so I thank you for the explanation.
Local ad valorem tax reduction, if.
R, thanks for the reduction.
If, if it is, if anything is passed, I will bet you lunch or dinner, probably lunch, that it will come tied with every dollar you get has to reduce your mill levy, has to be reduced in your property tax rate. So I don't think any of us should assume that it's new dollars for Johnson County Community College.
It's not new dollars. They're intended to replace, and you're, and it's then supposed to be a, a give back on the mill side.
And the complaint was, we were getting $100, we didn't reduce, reduce our property taxes to $100.
Right.
If it comes back at all, it will be tied explicitly and legally that it has to be a reduction in your mill levy. So it, it's a nice, another nice thing to talk about, but it's not going to help, help us if we need more money that has to come through property taxes.
I thank you for that. Bristol, if we could go there for lunch, Greg.
Sonic, is what I would say.
Sonic. Homelessness, other than, I'm not trying to pick on, it is my hometown, I went to undergrad there. Other than Lawrence, does any, does Topeka have a homeless problem?
Overland Park has a homeless problem.
I understand that.
Yeah, there are many, there are many cities across the state that have homeless issues. And there was a bill that was introduced last year that was really punitive to cities, and it took their ability away to manage what, what camping looks like. Cities are, are struggling right now anyhow to figure out how to answer and address the homeless problem. It, it does present itself differently in, in different communities, depending on what services are offered in those communities, the, the proximity of those communities to, to a highway or to a rail system. So it really is different, and I don't know if a blanket approach is, is going to work or not, but they've been having those conversations at, this summer, and I think we'll see a revisit of, I think it's probably going to really address some regulations and ordinances at the local level and, and what cities can, can maybe do. I don't, I'm hoping that it doesn't tie the hands of the local units of government. Frequently, that's what happens when we start, when the state steps in and has a solution for something, but it's, it's a much larger issue that continues to grow.
I, I thank you, and I apologize if the question was ignorant. Utilities, there's, there's really a proposal to elect members of the Kansas Corporation Commission?
There certainly is. Americans for Prosperity has already sent out postcards on that, on that issue. And that's just one, one area that is probably going to see some. I mean, I don't, I don't cover utilities a lot, just based on what I do.
No, I thank you for including it.
But, but that is going to be a, a topic that, that will be discussed. And I think Missouri, at one point, I don't know if they still do, elected their utilities commissioners. They may be appointed now, but I think you run into a whole host of issues when you, when you start going down that road.
I think this would be the same group of people that also wants to elect Supreme Court justices.
Could be.
That's my knowledge. Couple more things, sorry to keep you, but I think, thank you for the KACC legislative priorities. And I think it was Dr. Bound that first brought this to my attention, the transfer credits program to, program articulation quicker, for quicker graduation. Is KACC, are we really bringing that? Does that mean, is that going to be a push we're making? Is to have statutory requirements for articulations, like at 60 hours, a minimum 60 hours?
Yeah.
And then, just to point out to everyone and to anyone listening, say, people who work at Pitt State, that they list here one person's socioeconomic burden retaking 24 hours of credits. It comes to about $75,600 on, on a person. And as a matter of privilege, I know my wife had to do this when she transferred from Hutchinson Community College to KU. It was an extra year, bonus year, she got, which I wasn't too upset about, but at any rate, it was a burden on her and her family. So thank you for including that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Carter. I don't have anything else. Anybody else? Dick, thank you, as always. The next item on our agenda is a report from the College Council by Mr. Jason Arnett. Welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Appreciate you having me. You're welcome. All right. We met Wednesday, December 6th, to get updates from members. We had a very short meeting, so there wasn't a lot. I can tell you, the Counseling Office is full up with students. They're, all their appointments are, are taken up, and they have lots of people walking in here at the end of the semester. And their department is ramping up their mandatory advising committee again. So I don't know exactly what that means. I hope we'll find out more next month. There's that. Staff Council is preparing for its PLD Week presentations, including the all-campus update and the all-staff meeting. And they are also developing a project that we will hear more about in the new year. The Communications Subcommittee of College Council is reviewing results from our focus group sessions in October, and will pick up meetings again in January with a goal to have some recommendations on improvements in communication in, in general, late in the spring. And I just wanted to note that this is the end of our second full year of work as a council. We had a few months prior to that, but we've been doing this for two years, and it feels like we're finally starting to hit some sort of stride, so that's, that's what I have for you today.
Any questions for Mr. Arnett? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Arnett.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, leave the final report from Trustee Muzel for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle.
I do not want to take the spot of the Faculty Association.
I swear, I, I had a circle there. I apologize. The next report will be from the Faculty Association. I missed, and I know Mr. Jim Leicher is standing in.
Would you like me to give the report, Jim?
I was this close.
I try not to do that.
Good evening. I'm Jim Leicher, professor of history. My colleague, Dr. Andrea Vu, is recovering from a flu bug and didn't think folks would delight in a congested and coffee person giving the report tonight, so she asked me to fill in. I agree gladly, because for me, this is like old home week. I get a chance to relive memories of when I graced this podium as FA president about 17 years ago. Maybe it wasn't that long, maybe it was last May, but anyway, time's all relative. December brings with it several things, the most obvious being finals week and the holiday break. Students finished exams on Monday and grades were submitted Tuesday. The winter term, called winterum, cute, right, has already begun. For faculty, December brings the announcement of distinguished service award and sabbatical recipients. The distinguished service awards recognize excellence in job performance for bargaining unit members who have completed five years full-time at JCCC. Applicants are assessed by an external judge who looks at extraordinary effort in four categories: basic job responsibilities, division and institutional responsibilities, community engagement, and professional development. Awardees receive $2,500 in each of two years, so it's quite a big deal to receive this. This year's awardees are Lori Slaven, chemistry; Deb Williams, environmental science; Mark Cowardon, fine arts; Gwenda Hawke, legal studies; Joy Rhodes, fashion, merchandising and design; Dave Krug, accounting; and Terry Easley-Heraldo, communication studies. As we learned earlier, Terry is quite adept at these things. I expect she'll win a Nobel Prize one day, maybe even an Oscar. Sabbatical leaves are granted for any activities that contribute to personal and professional growth. They're available to all full-time faculty and salaried staff after six years of full-time employment. A faculty peer review committee evaluates each application and makes recommendations for approval. This year's sabbatical projects are in your packet, but Andrea would like me to announce them. There are 10 of them, and they are Britt Benjamin, fashion, merchandising and design, who will enroll in a museum studies program at K-State and visit fashion collections at other institutions to examine methods for preserving our own collection here at JCCC. Dan Crier, English, will conduct research on and create a summary of AI-powered writing tools and to what extent they are freeing us from various tasks, whether they aid or inhibit learning, and how much they will impact academic labor going forward. Gina Egan, chemistry, is going to be researching psychedelic chemistry, which will ultimately contribute to a greater understanding of these properties and their impacts within her field. Dave Krug, accounting, is writing a guide of the mental health tools he has researched, applied to his own life, and utilized in his classes to enable a better understanding of mental health, both in students and in business environments. Kathy Leffert, mathematics, is creating more effective online content for Math 120 Business Math to reinforce student success in that course. Valerie Mann, college success, will research required first-year experience classes at our peer institutions. This will help her understand how these classes benefit students and what new practices we might want to implement. Theresa McChesney, math, will be working to develop instructor materials for a non-STEM math course called Contemporary Math here at JCCC, consistent with the work going on between us and the state of Kansas. Ashley Raider, communication studies, will be completing her doctoral dissertation in emotional intelligence and self-directed learning readiness amongst post-pandemic community college students in Kansas and Missouri. This is meant to broaden knowledge of non-cognitive traits that impact student success. Mark Swhales, copyright librarian, is researching academic integrity and crowdsourced dishonesty, like the kind we've all seen on sites that encourage users to post exam questions and answers for other students. That's a growing concern for all of us in the faculty. Gretchen Thum, journalism and media communications, will be pursuing social media certification and taking advertising courses in order to build up curriculum, thus enabling students to further obtain employment in sectors that have become dependent on social media. Amy Warner, counseling, will research supports needed for higher-functioning students with intellectual disabilities and those on the autism spectrum not currently served in the Connect Program. And Lanny Witters, environmental science, will revise the Environmental 131 Environmental Science Lab Manual and create an instructor companion guide. In all, these faculty have proposed a robust set of projects, which will contribute not only to their personal and professional growth, but I think to the success of this college and its students. Next, I want to acknowledge that we have two trustees who are retiring and are with us for their last meeting as board members. Trustee Nancy Ingram, the current vice chair of the board, who's been with us since 2015, and trustee Greg Muzel, former chair, who has been with us since 2011. On behalf of the FA, thank you both for your service and commitment to JCCC and the wider community. This is, as they say, one of the best community colleges in the nation, and we're able to provide high-quality education because of the dedication to our mission, vision, and values that you demonstrate every day. Your guidance and expertise will definitely be missed. Dr. Vu also asked me to personally express her thanks for your advice and counsel these last couple of years. To those sentiments of Andrea's, I'll add my own, as I warned her I would do. Certain, certainty, besides being the enemy of humility, is a luxury afforded only to those who get to approach the world through one narrow perspective. When you're in that mindset, it's easy to criticize and complain because you're certain you know what the right answer is. For those who've had to step out of our work bubbles and see the college with a wider lens, it becomes obvious how big, diverse, and challenging an institution this is. One decision, no matter how seemingly simple, has repercussions for everything else. You know this. The Faculty Association has been vocal in opposition when we thought the wrong things were being prioritized or when the right questions weren't being asked. But we have never doubted the difficulty of occupying those seats, month after month, year after year, explaining your decisions to the voters, and the ongoing dedication to public service that's required to muster the stamina to do so. Greg and Nancy, you're both great examples of that. We wish you well in your new endeavors and hope to see you on campus in the future.
Thank you.
Finally, we'd like to acknowledge Chair Lee Cross. I believe you were first elected in January of 2021, so next month will be the end of your second year as chair. We'd like to personally thank you for your openness to hear multiple perspectives, your deliberative approach to board discussions, and your continued commitment to this college and its employees, your terrific representation of what it means to be a community servant and leader, all of which has been appreciated. Lucky for us, you're not retiring. We still get to have you on the board for a few more years. FA leadership looks forward to continuing to work with you to grow and improve this college. That was a lot, so thank you for your time this evening.
Any questions for Professor Leicher? I want to just say thank you. I just found a Time Magazine article, just so Laura Smith-Everett knows I was doing something productive on my phone.
I thought you were going to mention Taylor Swift. I was like.
No, that, it's a.
Moneyball.
I could, there's so much out there. The urgent case for all sabbaticals, the urgent case for sabbaticals for all from Time Magazine, and the article states that nearly two-thirds of the, the majority of people we interviewed did not intend to take their sabbatical. Over two-thirds were forced to step away from work by sudden or negative events such as death in the family, toxic relationship at work or home, or getting fired or laid off, and many were experiencing physical mal- And many were experiencing physical maladies, such as ulcers, migraines, caused by or related to job stress. And nearly every participant exhibited what we term functional workaholism, a high-performing but obsessive preoccupation with work. And they list out six major headlines here, the reasons for sabbaticals. There's one, personal healing, exploring what else is in the world, reintegrating particularly with your family and your own life, overcoming the approval addiction. And it's rather lengthy article, but I wanted to just thank you for outlining that ancient concept that I believe, the Old Testament, that the ancient Jews knew, was that there has to be a year that a field sits fallow among seven and that the rest is needed for growth and long-term success. So thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Trustee.
I have some comments at the end of the meeting, Jim, but in the case you don't stay till the end.
Oh, I think I'm here for the...
But I want to thank you for your comments. I have some comments about the leadership that is from the FA that, over my time, and how much I've appreciated the opportunity to sometimes spar, sometimes discuss, to break bread together, and to know that both perspectives, if they're different, are in the best interest of the college from our perspective. So you were an excellent leader of that for the FA, and I got a text from Andrea saying she was sick, so I'm glad you were the one filling in for her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a clapping time, sorry. The next item on our agenda is the final report by trustee Musil for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Apologize.
The Johnson County Education Research Triangle is funded by a $0.01 sales tax passed by the voters in 2008, raises money for the KU Cancer Clinic, KU Edwards Campus, and the Case State Innovation Campus in Olathe. The month-to-date, November of 2023, is 5% over what was 2022. Year-to-date, we're about 5% up over 2022. If that trend continues for the month of December, the three entities that benefit from this will have about $1 million more to split those three ways for their programming purposes. The board will change somewhat dramatically in January as Mayor Peggy Dunn, who has been the chair of that for a number of years, is not going to be an elected official. You have to be an elected official to be on the board. The community college has a liaison to the J-Cert board. Similarly, Mike Bame, who is mayor, just left his mayorship in Lenexa, has been on that board for 15 years probably. I was on it before, and I've been on it the last two years, but it will be a different-looking board. It will be chaired by DeSoto City Council member Kevin Hahnemichael. And it will be fine, but it will be a different board, and I look forward to doing what I can to help the next liaison from Johnson County Community College prepare for that. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Any questions for trustee Musil? Seeing none. The next item on our agenda is a report from trustee Ingram, the past president of the Kansas Association of Community Colleges.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We did have our final quarterly meeting this year in liberal. We were at Seward County Community College. 18 colleges were in attendance and were represented by either their president or their trustee liaison. We had a presentation from Lightcast, which provided the statewide economic impact of Kansas community colleges. Kansas community colleges supported over 8,000 jobs directly and over 106,000 jobs indirectly, with a total economic impact on the state of Kansas of $6.7 billion, which is 3.3% of the gross state product. Kansas community colleges support over 28,000 healthcare jobs across the state alone. Kansas community colleges are training a large sector of the Kansas workforce and are critical to the economic vitality of the state. For every $1 in local taxes spent on a Kansas community college, taxpayers receive $2.20 return, which is a rate, a return rate of 4.9%. Each college also received an individual economic impact report for their own institution. The result of these studies will be pushed out through the marketing efforts in the coming days. We also had a FAFSA update report, which was provided, and complications from the federal government simplifying the FAFSA were shared, along with how the delay in the FAFSA opening may impact enrollment and financial aid office operations. We had our annual election of KACC officers. The current officer team was re-elected with Arlen Leicher from Colby Community College as president, Don Ash from Kansas City, Kansas Community College as vice president, David Marshall from Hutch as continuing as chairman, excuse me, as treasurer, and Eric Kilo from Pratt Community College as secretary. Mike Johnson from Martin County Community College will serve as past president. As the current past president, did not run to be elected to their local board. I'm reading from the script. That would be me. I'm sorry. A report was heard about the president's... Well, I thought it was very interesting. She wrote it that way. A report was heard about the president's meeting, which was held most of the day Friday. Policies and procedures around active shooters, name-image likeness, which is NIL, athletics, and serious misconduct policies related to prospective students were discussed. Also, a presentation was heard from Level Up Kansas, which is a marketing effort to re-engage adult learners in higher education. Finally, a discussion of policy suggestions related to the Kbor service area policy were examined and suggested changes will be forwarded to Kbor to recommend that all institutions be treated in the same manner related to new programs within colleges' home service areas. We approved our legislative agenda. The most critical pieces of the legislative agenda included budget priorities for the community college, which include fully funding SB 155, tiered and non-tiered funding, as well as maintaining the $6.5 million for cybersecurity, $5 million for capital outlay, and $14.3 million for workforce training that was received last session. And that was what Mr. Carter was referring to, as those dollars basically being the same. Most critical policy priority is to maintain local control and the Board of Trustees' ability to levy taxes, set tuition, and financially manage the college in the most efficient way possible as they best understand the needs of the local community, region, and college. Sue Peterson was also introduced, as I mentioned earlier. She will be KACC's new contract lobbyist, who will assist Heather in the State House. Current trends and issues in higher education were also discussed, which included competency-based education, community college alumni's perception of community colleges, student support services, enrollment trends, and the athletic legislative post-audit, which will likely be presented to the legislature in February. A recent Attorney General opinion about exclusions from executive sessions and statutes governing faculty. The Kansas Speak survey completed recently by Forte State was also discussed as community colleges were seen as a good investment by most Kansans and as a better investment than four-year institutions. New trustee training will be provided by Heather Morgan via Zoom, with the option of boards inviting Heather for onsite training if they're interested. It was also encouraged that trustees who have been serving might well be received and served by attending to learn about new and emergent, emerging issues. The next meeting, KACC, will be held in conjunction with the PTK Honors Event at 11:30 a.m. in Junction City on April the 14th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for trustee Ingram?
I could add one more thing from... She did send me the legislative, the copy of the legislative priorities, and I've already spoken to Caitlin and said that I would get those to Caitlin. We'll get those out to everyone so that you can see what the legislative priorities of KACC will be in the coming year. So you'll have that information.
Mr. Carter included them.
Were they in the packet?
Yes.
I apologize. Thank you. So you've got them.
Thank you. Can I get a picture of that?
Yes, and as Chair, or excuse me, Mr. Musil said earlier, I'm happy to assist the liaison, whoever is elected this evening, in working with KACC as we move forward. So I'll give you some transition pieces. It was a loaded meeting. There was a lot of information, and it's a huge packet. Better will be happy to share that.
And then you made it back to Summit Chanted Evening?
No, it was the Olathe Health.
Oh, excuse me.
But yes, six and a half hours. It was great.
Any other questions for trustee Ingram?
I said that half-heartedly, but there is, there is... I just have really appreciated the opportunity to represent you all with KACC. It's a wonderful organization, and it means a lot. It certainly didn't check, change my perspective of community colleges at all. It really enhanced it in different ways, and very proud to be a part of this. So thank you.
Thank you for doing it. You'll be missed.
I will miss it.
The next item on our agenda is a report for the Community College Foundation by trustee Rutan.
Thank you, Chair Cross. The JCCC Foundation was awarded a $100,000 grant from the John W. and FEE Spies Memorial Trust. This is going to support the Nerman Museum's restoration of the Leo Villarreal Microcosm Display. This grant was administered by Bank of America, and between this donation and the support received from the Wild Live event, we're thrilled to be able to complete the restoration with private donations. A new sponsor for the Midwest Trust Programing came in at $25,000 level, at the $25,000 level. It's one-hour heating and cooling, and they're our latest business sponsor of the Midwest Trust Series. Our end-of-year campaign will appeal. Appeal will be going out in the mail early in December. The foundation partnered once again with the Wiley Culinary and Hospitality Academy and will provide a thank-you coupon for a free pastry. The goal with this mailing is to provide a reminder to donate before the end of the year and ask donors if they're interested in learning more about our legacy planned-giving program. Proceeds from the box office for the Cohen Community Series were $75,000, and that's up about $20,000 over last year. And our Summit Chanted Evening 2023 Committee is going to meet on December the 13th to go over survey results and start talking about plans for next year. That completes my report.
Thank you. So they already met?
Yeah, it sounds like they did.
December 13th.
Actually, it was delayed until after the first of the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for trustee Rutan?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Audit Committee by myself, along with one recommendation. The Audit Committee met at 8:30 a.m. on Thursday, November 30th, in MTC 107. There was a presentation of draft audited financial statements by Chester Moyer, a partner, along with Corey Robinson, audit manager from Rubin Brown LLP, presented the draft annual financial statement report and the compliance report for the year ended June 30, 2023. Mr. Moyer informed the college that the college presented a clean audit with no uncorrected statements. So therefore, it is the recommendation of trustee Ingram and I on the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the administration's recommendation to accept the audited financial statements, financial statement for the year ended June 30, 2023, and I so moved.
I'll second.
Motion's been moved by myself and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Continuing on, there were updates on activities and audits and draft 2024 Audit Plan. Jennifer Miller, the senior managing consultant at Forvis, reviewed the risk assessment process. The following areas are proposed for the internal audit plan: fast rule, readiness assessment, payroll operation, succession planning, campus, youth programming, and ITGC and security and privacy. The biannual travel expenditures audit and the annual trustee travel expenditures audit, along with the annual risk assessment, are also planned for 2024. The audit recommendation update matrix was reviewed. Jennifer Miller also presented the summary of audit findings by risk rating. The bookstore has completed a one-medium-risk operational audit recommendation. The firearms audit has completed a one-high and one-medium-risk operational audit recommendations. With respect to the JCCC Ethics Line update, between August 23rd, 2023, and November 17th, 2023, 13 reports were received via the JCCC Ethics Line. Three reports received anonymously in all 13 cases have been addressed and closed. The Review Audit Committee Charter was discussed, and annually, the Audit Committee reviews the internal audit charter and the audit committee policies contained in the board policies. This practice is consistent with the Institute of Internal Auditors International Professional Practices Framework, IPPF Standard 1000, which requires the chief audit executive to periodically review the internal audit charter and present it to the board for approval. Jennifer did announce major changes to the IPPF will be coming in 2025. During 2024, Forvis will confirm the college is still in compliance. However, the mandated changes may affect board policies. Audit and Advisory Services is not proposing any changes to the internal audit charter at this time. And that concludes my report. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is a report for Collegial Steering, also by myself, because I enjoy hearing myself talk. But sadly, Collegial Steering did not meet this month due to illnesses and frankly, at my recommendation. So there is no report for that committee. The next item on the agenda is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee by trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Chair Cross. The Employee Engagement Development Committee met at 9:45 a.m. on Wednesday, December 6th, right here in the boardroom. Information related to the meeting can be found on pages 4 through 22 of the board packet. We have four items on here. I'm going to go through, and I'm actually going to go out of order. I'm going to do the last one first. We had an update on the VP search by Ann Griffith, Fine Line HR Consulting, provided an update related to the Vice President Human Resource Search. Executive Search Forum Harris Search Associates is conducting the initial outreach to candidates. Harris will recommend a slate of qualified candidates to JCCC Search Committee with the goal of having two to three semifinalists chosen before winter break. Following the committee discussion, the trustees expressed desire to have three semifinalists following winter break selected. Semifinalists will be invited to an on-campus interview day to meet with leadership, employees, and the HR team. We also went over the compensation planning. Natalie Croy from Culpeper and Associates provided an update to the Job Architecture Project. Ms. Croy reviewed the project's objectives, expectations, including the job leveling and benchmarking, developed a constant approach to job title and levels to create a tool for pay decisions. Approximately 91% of the JCCC jobs in scope are considered benchmark jobs. Ms. Croy then proposed, presented and proposed pay structure and explained the pay structure chart, narrow and broaden, as they go through up to support longevity and position in higher levels. Currently, JCC's pay structure is internally focused. Culpeper recommends utilizing the market-anchored proposed pay structure. Pam Widderman, Fine Line HR Consulting, and Dr. Bound provided an update on next steps related to implementing the Job Architecture Project and JCC Compensation Plan and proposed a timeline. The JCC Compensation Plan can be found on pages 5 through 21 of the board packet. Compensation Study Result Recommendation: The work completed by Culpeper, JCCC, and Fine Line HR Consulting teams over the past several months has culminated in a proposed update to the Johnson County Community College Compensation Plan, as well as recommendation to place staff into the appropriate pay grades. The recommendation includes the following: Approve the pay, proposed edits to the Compensation Plan document, including the proposed non-exempt, exempt, and executive pay structures effective January 1st, '24. Any adjustments to compensation for current staff will be implemented no later than April 1st of '24. Approve up to $1.85 million in annualized compensation to bring current staff into the proposed tables, plus $280,000 for estimated tax and benefits increases. Actual costs for the fiscal year will be dependent on implementation date. Charge the JCC Human Resource Team and Fine Line HR Consulting with the responsibility to develop the process to review proposed employee pay changes, including process by which exemptions to the initial pay grade placements may be considered. Any recommended pay changes must be approved pursuant to the authority granted to the president or designees prior to implementing the results of the phase of this project. College administration will seek approval if additional funds are required to address the increase. So we'd like to make a recommendation, is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the changes to the Compensation Plan at the new pay structure tables. I so hope.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Hamel and seconded by trustee Rail. Any discussion? Trustee, you.
I just want to comment, you know, many of you may already be aware here in the room, but for our external folks as well. Trustee Ingram and trustee Hamel and I have spent a lot of time visiting with the folks from Culpeper, as well as the folks from Fine Line, about this compensation plan. from Culpeper, as well as the folks from Fine Line, about this compensation plan. We've asked a lot of questions. We've gotten a lot of answers. And I think it's important to remember that the objective of this project was to bring the staff and administration of the college in line with the external market. And I have confidence that the work that was done has developed a plan that we can have confidence in going forward. But I also want to stress that it was our, a large part of our discussion was revolved around the implementation of the plan now that we have it, because that's where it can really go sideways. And so it was important to us, as we engaged in those discussions with Culpeper and Fine Line, that we get the new VP of HR on board to assist with that implementation, to make sure that someone internally is assisting the folks who have done an incredible amount of work. I see Becky here, she's, I'm sure, burned the candle at both ends many nights, and she needs to have leadership to help her as we kind of implement this, because that's the important piece, is making sure folks get placed properly onto the compensation tables, and it's done in a way that is equitable and that we all can trust will be sustainable over time. So that's the reason for the extended timeline for implementation. I know that originally, we had hoped to get things in place a little sooner, but I feel, and I don't want to speak for trustee Ingram and trustee Hamel, but I felt it was just incredibly important to make sure we get that piece right. And so that's the reason for the delay, but I think what we have here, well, I believe that what we have here is something that has integrity in terms of comparing us to the external market, and that's where we need to be in this unprecedented labor shortage that we've been living in for the past few years. We have to be able to recruit and retain the highest caliber of talent, and that's what this is designed to do. So I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. Trustee Smith Everett, then trustee Musa.
I appreciate your comments about that, because that was my question, and I was unable to come to committee day because I was ill, and really agree with you wholeheartedly that I think the implementation is where the biggest concern is why, has lied, laid for this board, and certainly for myself as an individual. I'm concerned about who tells the employee what their placement is, and then who assists them when they don't believe they're placed in the right place, which I assume is going to happen for, in every department, there will be some individual that doesn't believe that they're placed. I don't know if you could speak to that, or if we could ask one of the representatives to speak to how that will roll out in terms of individuals finding out where they are placed in the new compensation plan. And then I've got one other.
Yeah, I'll address it briefly, and then maybe I'll ask Pam to weigh in as well. The short answer to your question is that you have to kind of, kind of look at where people are and where they're going to end up on the table to determine whether or not there are outliers that need to be fixed, whether there are not issues that need to be addressed before you actually roll it out. And so that will be the first phase. Pam's going to tell me if I get this wrong. That'll be the first phase, is really making sure that the table and the way we're moving people over has integrity. Once that happens, and people start to get placed on the table, then there will be a process whereby they can go through their normal reporting chain to address any problems that they believe there are. And did I get that right?
We will have a process to, I mean, a large process, basically, where every employee will receive a document indicating their true name, title, version of pay range, version of pay, with change. And we also, at the same time, will educate and support the program, hopefully supervisors that they understand. And if there are issues, of course, employees have to, we will probably.
We're going to provide that support to supervisors before they, before their employees. Okay, just making sure. And I guess my follow-up is, I was not able to follow the timeline as you were giving it. Can somebody tell me where that is in the packet? Because I got lost in the compensation plan, but I, that timeline, I was trying to understand it as you were saying it, and I did not catch that on my review of the board packet earlier this week. Is it on, does anybody have the page number of where?
Like 21.
That new timeline is? Because I, my other comment was, I think without having a Director of HR, yeah, I totally missed that. Okay, thank you for that. I'm going to read over that. Without a Director of HR in place while we're rolling that out, that's always been a concern of mine, in particular, that we don't have the voice of HR really helping to inform and lead our staff and our cabinet on this. And so when we do get that HR leader, they're coming into something that's already taking off. Does the Harris Group doing a national search? Is it national? Okay, not regional, okay. That concludes my questions. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Musa.
My simple question for both of you, and thank everybody for the work on this, because it is thankless and never-ending, as you know. But my concern has always been, we talk about compensation, and that has two components. That is your wages and your benefits. And we have a pay table that is your wages, right? When we determine, or when Culpeper determined where we were market-wise in the pay table, does it also, did it also take into account whether our benefits are above, at, or below market? So that if I make $10 an hour someplace else, but I don't have healthcare, it's not the same as making $10 here. I just want to make sure that when we talk about total compensation, we're comparing, as best we can, apples to apples in the marketplace. And when I hear a pay table that we talked about, and then I see benefits I know are going to be on top of that, I just, somebody give me some comfort level on that?
The pay table itself is compared to market salaries, so base salaries compared to base salaries. When we communicate the overall offer package to an employee, or their overall employment proposition, if you will, you do want to take into consideration the total package, very generous benefits, but it does not come into play in building the.
Pam, could we have you come to the podium, please? I'm sorry to inconvenience you, but you're very important. If you could state your name for the.
Pam Winterman.
Thank you.
Thanks. So to repeat the answer to the question, I don't know, did Natalie join?
Natalie is online, yes.
She is online. And Natalie, you may, Natalie Croy from Culpeper is online as well. She may be able to explain. But the pay table itself is compared to base salaries in the market, so the median of the market is what helps us to determine the pay table. We don't take into consideration the value of benefits when you look at the base salary pay table, but you do consider that when you explain the overall employment value proposition of working at JCCC.
That frustrates me, because we want to be competitive. We want to recruit the best people. We want to keep the best people. Somebody might accuse me of looking at it from a taxpayer perspective. If I have median salary but awesome benefits, I am, this is a more competitive place than a place that has the same salary but lesser benefits. And so in our entire compensation plan, if we don't meld those together, it seems to me like we are, because our benefits are good. I think, I think you said generous, and I don't know if that was with respect to ours or not. I've always thought they were generous. I think that's good. I think people want benefits more these days, sometimes than salary, because healthcare and other benefits are so expensive and so hard to come by. But I guess I'm, I've always asked the question, and I'm still troubled by the fact that if we just compare salary to salary, and we don't compare total compensation to total compensation, we are not being as accurate as I wish we were. And that's nobody's fault in this room, but it's, it's my last rant on that particular topic. Thank you.
Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, you know, I didn't even, I don't know if I even considered that question at any point in time, or if I did. I don't remember questioning that part, and I think it's very relevant, and it makes me even think even more heavily with some of Melody's comments about the fact we don't have a VP of HR. And, you know, I have some HR experience, and nowhere to the level of the people that are working on this. And again, thank you for everybody taking the time to put this together. But it does concern me in that same way. You know, and again, I want to know if our benefits are more or less. That can make a big difference on if our salaries are accurate or not. The cost that we raise to do this is a concern in that as well. And one of the biggest things we've talked about the entire time is getting it right. I mean, got to get it just right, as much as we possibly can. Again, we're not going to get it perfect, obviously, but we want to do our absolute best, and I know that everybody has worked very hard to do it. I will say, I didn't feel as confident when Melody said, I feel kind of, not sure it's quite right to do it without a VP of HR. I'm feeling more heavily, especially after that. It shows me my inadequacy to make a decision on this without the Vice President of HR that we fully trust and committed to being here for the long term. I've also had numerous questions that I brought up that I really didn't get a chance to see and think about until I saw the actual recommendation here about three weeks ago. And I got a couple of those questions answered last night, but some of my biggest questions, my biggest concerns really weren't addressed. And one of my biggest concerns that I have is the fact that it looks very regressive, where most of the pay scale changes are towards the top, and increasing pay scales at the top, not as much the middle or the bottom. There could be a good reason for it. You know, I'm definitely not saying it's wrong. I can think of, I can propose reasons why it looks like this. I can also think of, maybe it shouldn't look like this. And without some of the data that I need, I can't support it the way it is. As much as I'd like to, I would love to see, one of the things I'd like to see, I know there's some areas where we have more issues and need to fix our pay scales that are more obvious, such as IT. There might be other ones that I haven't seen examples of. I'd be interested in trying to see if we can fix some of those now. But again, I would feel much better waiting until we have a Vice President of HR to look at these things. And also, I'd like to see some of these questions answered that I still have, and just to make sure we're doing it right.
Thank you, trustee Hamel. Trustee Reel.
I have a question for Natalie. Natalie, are you online?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
I seem to recall.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. I seem to recall as we were reviewing some of the information that ratio of salary to benefits was something that was at least researched as part of the market survey. Am I making that up, or is that an accurate statement?
This was focused on cash compensation. Your benefits broker typically would be the one to provide you with the benefits competitiveness to your peers, and so we can certainly add that into the, you know, final results. But typically, when organizations are looking at compensation, it's more about the actual dollars in their paycheck versus the value that the benefits, like Pam was saying, the value proposition that benefits bring to them. So when we looked at total compensation, it would include any bonuses or incentive compensation in the market, but healthcare benefits are not included in that number.
Can I jump in, trustee Reel? And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but thank you for the interruption. It's my understanding, and I'm asking Dr. Bound or Rachel, and they're valid concerns my fellow trustees raised. I'm not sure it was the charge of Culpeper to look at benefits, right? They're just, as they've stated here, they're just reviewing cash compensation.
I believe that's correct, but I would defer to.
That is correct. And it's not to take away from the questions or to try to argue exactly, I'm just saying, as it was framed, I think they've done their job.
I would say I didn't do my job then, because I raised the question, I thought, at the time, of whether this was a compensation study that determined whether or not we were treating people fairly from a wage and a benefit standpoint, and whether we were competitive in the marketplace. Because I know our benefits are good, having served in multiple private sector where the benefits aren't as good. The 403B benefits aren't as, aren't as good. The CAPERS benefits that are out there, always under attack, maybe by Topeka, but they're there. Healthcare benefits, dental, vision, I just don't find it apples to apples if we're not taking the total compensation package. And I would urge the next board and the next study to do that. It may not change anything, but I think we owe it to the taxpayer to say, our total package for you to come here as an ex is this, and here are the benefits you have. And we're going to recruit based on the benefits, because our salary is going to match a median in the marketplace for that defined job. So we're going to match that, and then we're going to, we're going to bring them in and recruit them by saying, here are all the benefits you get that you don't get in most private sector jobs today, especially at some of the levels of the jobs that we, that we pay. So it's frustrating to me, and I'm, I will support this because of the work that's gone into it, but I wanted a compensation study, a market compensation study that tested our wages and benefits against comparable jobs in the higher education market or the marketplace generally. And I, I thought that's what we were getting, and that's my failing.
And let me state for the record, and I thank you for your comments. I wholeheartedly agree with you in terms of a full analysis, and I, I think it goes to trustee Hamel's point, that this is why, and I know somebody else on this board has raised the issue, this is why we needed a trusted internal professional, such as an Executive Vice President of HR, to help us filter and merge these issues. So I didn't mean to be combative or argue with you. I.
This is my, this is my failing. I apologize for that, but I think.
Well, it's mine, too.
I think going, going into the future, if we're truly going to say, how do we recruit, how do we attract, recruit, retain the best employees, at a cost that's, that's fair to the taxpayers, we need to include the benefit side of it, because we know from our budget work how much the benefits cost, and we know from this number, 1.85 million is cash, right? And then 280-some thousand is cash we have to pay based on increased Social Security, Medicare, all the other tax things that go along with a higher wage. So we're at $2 million in cash charged to the college for this, and our benefit costs are going to go up next year as well. And that's why I think, and I'll go back to Bob Drummond, sustainable, are we sustainable doing this without looking at the full picture of what an employee gets at Johnson County Community College? I know that sounds harsh and like I'm trying to cut people, I'm not. I want to be competitive. I don't mind if we are competitive plus, so we, so we get the best people and retain them, but that's not what we looked at here.
Trustee Reel, I interrupted. Did you, did you have anything else?
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Trustee Rutan.
I agree with Greg that we all need a picture of total compensation. More and more, like you said, benefits are as valuable as your pay, and I even remember getting job offers and getting a total compensation picture, and it was put to a dollar value, like the value of your vacation and your benefits is worth this much, so this is how much you're really making. And I think, again, it is a piece of information for us, but it can be a very strong recruiting tool. And so if we don't do it, then we may be in a position where we're not getting the best and the brightest that we want to bring into this institution. But I do think that we could proceed with this compensation study and make sure that we build into our budget as soon as possible to do the rest of the compensation and get a total picture for the next budgeting year.
Anybody else?
That's a conclusion.
I'm sorry. Does that conclude your remarks?
Yes, it does.
Unless there's no other discussion, the motion has been moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion's been moved and seconded for the compensation plan and pay structure on pages five through 21 of your packet. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 And those, those opposed, no.
No.
The motion passes six to one. I believe trustee Hamel, that concludes your report.
Yeah, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Management and Finance Committee by trustee Hamel.
Mark and I talked, and I'm going to take that since he had the one right before it. The Management and Finance Committee met at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, December 6. Information related to the meeting is found on pages 23 through 35 of the board packet. We heard from Sandra Warner on our ongoing, I think, quarterly reports on mission continuity and risk management, including a workers' compensation update, which you ongoing board members will deal with, as our workers' compensation reserve fund is lower and is required an infusion from the general fund, and may need that in the future to stabilize it. There is one agreement with an outside organization. It's presented on page 53 of the board packet. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President for Campus Services and Facility Planning, reviewed the progress on various capital projects, including GEB first-floor renovations, and the status of the commercial driver's license driving range project. We have recommendations to present tonight. The first recommendation. to present tonight. The first recommendation is with respect to changes in insurance policy 213.00. The policy was reviewed as part of a scheduled review of college policies. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve modification to the insurance policy 213.00 as shown subsequently in the Board Packet, and I so move.
I'll second.
Motion's been moved by Trustee Musel and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion on this recommendation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Trustee Musel.
We received a report on the budget guidelines and the development of those budget guidelines, including information on the recommendation from the administration for tuition increases, showing the estimated revenues and expenses. And at this point, I'd like to ask Janelle Vogler to come to the podium to review the recommendation, specifically the proposed tuition rates for 2024 and 2025 academic year, although the other guidelines are also up for discussion.
Great. Thank you. Okay, tonight, I'd like to spend a few minutes and go over the recommendation that's in front of you regarding the preliminary budget guidelines and spend a little bit of extra time on the tuition rate recommendation that we're bringing forward this evening. So we'll start, this should be in your packet, we'll start with the revenue side of the picture. At this point, we are basing our assumptions on a 7% increased assessed valuation. However, we will know much more about that in February when we get the reports back from the county. But that allows us to start the planning process. And at that 7%, we are looking at a flat and a levy until we have more information. Second, we're looking at tuition and fees. The administration is recommending a 4% increase across the board of all residency categories. And we're basing our projections on a conservative estimate of 2% enrollment growth in the coming year. So I'll go into the tuition recommendation a little more depth in just a minute. Finally, for our state funding, we're basing our FY '25 budget on what we're receiving in this current fiscal year for FY '24. So just a quick glimpse at the expense side of things. We're looking at total number of budgeted full-time faculty and staff will not increase. However, that doesn't preclude us from reallocating vacant positions that we currently have on our staffing table to meet the needs of the college as we go throughout the year. Salary increases will be budgeted pursuant to the outcome of the spring faculty negotiations. And then finally, college staff will be recommending operating budget priorities. In the coming months, after the holiday break, there was a process involving input from all across campus. All of our budget administrators will be submitting their budget requests. And then we have subsequent budget prioritization exercises in order to determine what that final number will look like, that we'll be bringing forward in that budget recommendation. Okay, so let's dive a little bit deeper in on the tuition rate recommendation. Again, that preliminary assumption is we're basing these calculations on a conservative 2% growth in enrollment. If you recall, in fiscal year '24, we did not increase tuition and fees. This year, our recommendation is a 4% across-the-board increase, so 4% on all the residency categories. And that puts us at a $4 increase for Johnson County residents, a $5 increase for Kansas residents outside of our county, $9 for out-of-state and international students, and then $6 for our bordering county metro rate students. We talked about this a couple of times in Management and Finance, and the committee requested an alternate scenario. So you'll see that on the right-hand side there, and that is a 3% increase for Johnson County residents, and then a resulting 6% increase for the other three residency categories. So you can see that would put it at a $3, $7, $14, and $9 increase. Either scenario is estimated to net the college approximately $1.8 million in incremental revenue. $500,000 of that, excuse me, is due to the increased enrollment, if we were to leave rates the same. And the additional $1.3 million would be due to those tuition increases. So this last slide here is just, that's the recommendation that's in your packet. So I'll stop there and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Vogler? Trustee, Trustee Reel?
Thank you for that information. Do we have any idea what's happening to the tuition rates at the other community colleges here in our area? I guess I'll start there, Kansas City, Kansas, and then on the other side of the state line as well.
I don't know what they're planning for next year. We do have information for what they did this last year. There's, it's all in the budget book. But no, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
They're probably all doing this process right now as well.
Right, yeah.
I know we've seen it in very recent time, last two or three months in Harvard Packet. Any other questions, Trustee?
I don't have questions. I want, I want to just make, make one mention here. On the, the general part of the budget, as projected, with the keeping the mill levy the same and a 7% valuation increase, would generate 7.7 million in incremental revenue. I don't know if that's in the, is that in the-
I don't have it in there, but you are correct.
Okay, that, that was presented at the, at the, at the committee level. Tuition and fees, whether we raise them in either of those scenarios, will raise another 1.8 million. And then the, we believe that state funding will provide 600,000 in incremental revenue. So as presented, the guidelines would provide 10, 10.1 million in new dollars for fiscal year '25. Boy, that seems weird to say that. So, again, that, that's, that's a lot of money that's built into this budget, and we won't know more until we get the appraisers' numbers for, as of January 1. But that's 10.1 million in new dollars. I really appreciate it, and I've told Janelle, in the, in the packet for the committee, I, no, it's not, I don't think, it wasn't in the Board Packet, but if you saw the back, it, it had a, a very complicated chart, but it showed how our tuition followed inflation, or what the contrast was between our tuition and inflation. And we have, our tuition has always been below the, the rate of inflation. It's significantly below. And so, I think, I've talked before, I think we needed to look at a tuition increase this year. I appreciate the administration's thorough analysis of what they did there. I'm interested in Trustee Hamel's proposal that we raise tuition slightly less on Johnson County residents because they're paying the property tax burden at 68% of our budget, and a little more on out-of-county and out-of-state. And I want to hear some more discussion on that. But Janelle, do we, do we know, what is the, what is our variable that says out-of-county ought to be X percent above? Or have we just followed along and raised the same percentage each time? I, I don't remember how we've done this. I don't remember from when we started the metro rate. But is there, is there any kind of benchmark out there that says your in-state rate, or your in-county rate, which is supported with 68% of your general fund by property taxes, ought to be 70% of what your out-of-state rate is? I don't know how we got to where we are now, and that's why I'm intrigued with Mark's proposal, because the, the big numbers out-of-state and out-of-county are not huge increases dollar-wise. And they do recognize that Johnson County residents have been paying property taxes in a different way. And I've always said, all students that come here pay property taxes when they go to Panera or McDonald's, they're paying something in property taxes. But if you're living in Johnson County, you are paying more in property taxes to this, to this community college, and maybe a 3% increase is fairer to Johnson County residents. And the other thing I don't want to do is I don't want to hurt our enrollment from those other people, because we've, we've requested, and I just don't, I just don't know how to balance those.
So I have a couple of thoughts that might be helpful for your discussion. I'd, we'd have to go back and look at the past tuition increases. I think we've done them differently throughout the years, like more typically the same amount. I did take a look at the other community colleges in the state, and so I compared the resident rate for all the state community colleges, so that being the lowest, and the highest rate, which is defined a little differently for each college. And we are actually lower than the average in district rate, but higher than the average international rate, which is the highest rate for certain colleges. So I'd say we have a little bit, maybe bigger spread between that highest rate and that lower rate than the average of the 19, if that makes sense.
It does.
And I might also throw out, for your consideration, when we were discussing this in Cabinet and having some conversations, we, we were looking for a balanced approach. We didn't want such a steep increase on those out-of-state and metro students, because those were populations we already didn't want to threaten their enrollment in any way. And then if you also look at the basis, their tuition's already lower, so the 4% is going to be a lower increase anyway. So that's just, just some thoughts that we had as we were discussing it. So I'll turn it back to you to-
I'm, I'm interested in discussions on that, because I, I don't know, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but I, the principle that Mark presented has some appeal.
I'll step back up for you.
Trustee Smith, ever.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My initial thoughts are that Johnson County residents already reap the benefit of a lower tuition cost than anyone else. And that if we're going to raise the rates, it seems more fair to raise it the same percentage for everyone, because we already have variable rates based on where you're coming from. It seems to me incredibly punitive on our international students, which, if we recall during COVID, basically went down to hardly anything. And we still, as far as I understand, are not back up to our pre-COVID international student enrollment numbers. And I think this will be a greater deterrent for students. And I, and I really, you know, you know I'm going to say it from the KC Metro area, I really worry about that being an even more, bigger barrier for those students.
Like an access to education.
Yeah, well, because they tend to need to use the transportation options, which I'm so glad we've expanded and we have more now. But they have barriers of transportation, education, and their ability, you know, their, their, when you come from the Kansas City Metro area, your education opportunities were already very different than those of Johnson County students. And whether we understand it or not, when we've been talking about our math review and our department reviewing how we do our math, one of the biggest barriers to students is passing our math classes, because oftentimes, the kind of math that you get in certain ZIP codes is not the same as the kind of math that you get access to that my own children get, because we have the privilege of being able to move to an area with excellent school systems. So to me, I would be opposed to this, this approach on the right, which is the specially requested option, only because I think we already have Johnson County residents reaping the benefits of a lower tuition rate than anyone else. And I don't think it behooves us to have extra punitive incurred cost for those outside of that Johnson County area. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I'll say, one of my, one of my goals of being here on this board is the fact that I enjoyed my time here. I got a lot out of this school, and I know that people have as well that have attended, such as Melody. And my tuition was in, you know, a little over 20 years ago, was $40 a credit hour. And so, I went to Bureau of Labor and Statistics, their calculator on, on inflation. And from my time, inflation would put it at $78 a credit hour. And we're at 97 now. There's a lot of things that can happen besides inflation. And again, I want to be clear, we don't only want to look at inflation. There's so many other factors go into it. But one of my goals is to make it more cost-effective to come here for students. I want that door to be bigger than it was for me, because there are people that I know during my time that didn't come to school here that talked about it, never did it. I'd like to see that door open for as many people as we possibly can. I would say, and I'd also love to see our education be even better than what I got. You know, so those are the goals, and those are hard things to do with limited resources. And I know that's a lot of things we're all trying to do here as well. We're all trying to open the door as wide as we can, and also keep the education standards as high as we can as well. And, and, you know, $4 or $3 a credit hour isn't necessarily massive, isn't breaking the bank. But again, one of the things that I like to talk about is there's always a pinch point in every single equation. When you try to help somebody, somebody doesn't make the cut, you know? Somebody's just inside that window, and it's hard to figure out where that window is. But I want to make that, again, the door has got to be as open as, as wide as we can. I don't even want to raise it at all if I could help it. I can be persuaded to a $3 increase, especially because of the fact that Johnson County is paying the bigger part of the bill when we pass it on. But I know that I can't, I don't recommend the $4 credit, $4 credit hour increase. I know we raised it $3 two years ago. Again, obviously, we're doing a lot of tough stuff here, but, but I really want to, whatever I can do to try to keep, I want it better for the next generation that I have it. And right now, I feel like we're heading in a direction in our country where we're making it harder on the next generation continuously, little by little. We're just slightly going past what it is, and it's slightly harder, slightly harder on a home, slightly harder to pay rent, slightly harder to get into college and pay for it. They have more debt when they get out typically, and it's not on us. We do a pretty good job of keeping this as low as we can. And I take massive pride that we make our, our tuition so low. When we compare ourselves to other people, you know, and we were the lowest, or we're absolutely one of the lowest, and we give one of the best education, you know, I know you all do. We all take pride in that fact, that we can, we can do that for so many people. And so, I want to do whatever we can to lower it. And I could be persuaded to a $3 increase, but I definitely won't support the four.
Trustee Reel.
So I agree with so many things that Trustee Musel and Trustee Hamel just said, and I think I'm more in your camp. Trustee Musel, when I first read this, the option had tremendous appeal to me, for the simple reason that the largest majority of the funding for this institution comes from Johnson County taxpayers. I, I would not consider raising the tuition rates for people who do not live in Johnson County as being punitive in any way, but merely just a recognition that our tax dollars are paying for this institution, and as such, Johnson County residents should, should realize the benefit of that. We're supporting our community. But then, on the other hand, I'm a, I'm a big advocate for education improves lives, no matter where that education's occurring. Higher ed is becoming increasingly unaffordable for a lot of middle-class and, and lower-class Americans. I remember when I enrolled each of my children in college, thinking to myself, how would a family of four, living on an income that's considered middle-class in this country, afford to do this? I was fortunate that my children had scholarship funds and such, that they were able to do that. How, how are people affording to send their kids to college? And how are people who are graduating with degrees that don't necessarily earn them six figures right out of college going to pay off all this student debt? And so, the dilemma for me is finding the balance between those two things. And as I sit here right now, I still don't know where I fall. But I think there's merit in, in both arguments. Johnson County taxpayers pay the bulk of the budget for this institution. That should be for the benefit of Johnson County residents. But if we're truly invested in improving education more globally, it needs to be affordable for everyone. So I, I'm still sitting here on the fence, and I've been thinking about it ever since I read, read this in the, in the Board Packet. But those are my thoughts.
President Truman looked for a one-handed economist. So there was never on the other hand. And that's what we have here, I think.
I love that story. Trustee Ratan, Trustee, I see, President.
I was just trying to figure out even the, I'm trying to get to the source equation. I think you referred to, like, do we say we take Joe Co. at 97, and we add 20% to a Kansas resident, we add 135% to out-of-state, we add 47% to the metro. So I'm just trying to get to the source equation, how we even arrived at that. And I'm also on the fence. When I first looked at the 100, I like a nice even number. But yeah, when you're thinking globally, you know, how much $14 is quite a lot bigger than three. So I'm not sure where I am right now, but I just want to, I just want to go back to the root of how do we even decide, what's the striations between the different groups of people, which I don't know.
If I can, do you have anything? If I could jump in here. I like and love all of you very much, so it's hard to disagree with any of you. But it all reminds me of a story a visiting pastor from Arkansas told at our church one time, that the church took great pains to provide, like, food pantry and different opportunities for, for the community. And yet- And yet, the parishioners would just focus on whether or not people using that pantry were actually members of the church. Whether or not it meets the mission of the church is up for debate. Here, I probably side or share Trustee Ray and Ratan's position. I think the questions raised by Trustee Musial and Hamel are poignant and sound. I do nevertheless share Trustee Smith Everett's concern about access to education. I'll say this, it would be my preference, whatever we did, we doubled it all. Because even if we doubled all of it at 6% or 8, or 6 and 12 and 8, we're still below inflation, I think, since 2020, and certainly in my 10 years. And I took two classes here, Mark Hamel, Trustee Hamel, in the summer of 99, Econ and Intro to Psych. So I too went here. I'll run three times on that. If you hadn't heard, I'm telling you. So I share all of your concerns. I think that the realities of inflation, we're going to see it next year in a negotiation of the master agreement. We have to deal with it, and we've got to teach our students about it. Whatever the reason, if there's too much stimulus, if there's too much employment, whatever, we've got inflation, and we need to deal with it. So, look, I thank the administration for these numbers. I think, honestly, raising it a flat percentage rate makes some sense. I do nevertheless, I could be persuaded at 3 and 6, or frankly, I would prefer 6 and 12. And that's just to underscore the need, that we need the money. And we have, at my urging, held tuition and fees flat for some time. I think, I don't remember the last time we raised it. Two years ago, but very little over the last eight to 10 years. So I thank the administration for that, but I think it's a very good discussion. I just wanted to give my thoughts. I would prefer we raise it more, and I'm happy to accept the administration's recommendation, though.
That's what I want to hear, because you guys probably discussed all this in Cabinet that we're going through now, and you made the recommendation that it stay at 4% after Mark made his recommendation. So I'm interested in hearing an analysis.
So I think, as we think about tuition increases, and we all know that there's always this quandary of, do you raise tuition? How much do you raise it? Is it too much? Is it not enough? How does that go to other income revenue sources related to local tax dollars and so forth? And trying to balance all that out in this. I think, for me, one of the pieces that I'm always looking at is what's the affordability for a student? And so the current Pell eligibility rate, or the amount available to Pell, is 73.95. And so what I'm always trying to think through is for a student who is Pell-eligible, can they afford to come to Johnson County Community College and get the high-quality education that we know that they will get when they come here? And so that's one piece. But I also think about and recognize the legislature when together the state offered the Kansas Promise Scholarship. And, you know, that allows for students who are above the Pell threshold to have access to financial aid that otherwise wouldn't be available to them. And so I'm always looking at those factors of how do we help students afford to attend college? And that is an important part of the mix. And so we went back and forth with, you know, do we do a flat amount across each of the groups, recognizing that, you know, how we got here over time to the tuition, it's like anything. Decisions that get made over time end up in this, and you end up with a current tuition structure that's 97, 116, 228, and 143, and it's just a set of decisions over time. The question is, can students that fit those categories afford to come here, given what's available to them, and realizing that Johnson County taxpayers do foot, you know, the significant portion of our budget, 68% of our budget? But it's intended with the other tuition rates to offset that tuition, that tax dollars, those tax dollars that they bring. I can remember when I was at Grand Rapids Community College, our tuition rates didn't differ this much between in-district and out-of-district. I remember a very conscious decision of the Board to raise out-of-tuition rates more highly, but that's because they started out almost identical. There was not that much of a difference. And they said, "Look, taxpayers, local taxpayers, bring this to the community by offering this, but increasing it significantly is what made sense to do." We've already done that over time. And so I think where we landed as Cabinet was really that in the best interest of the college and in best interest of the students that we serve, whether they're Johnson County students, Kansas residents, out-of-state, international, or metro-rate students, that we've reflected that in the tuition rate and really feel strongly that 4% across the Board allows those amounts to go up appropriately based on the tuition rates that are all we're charging. So that's, and I don't know, Rachel, if there's anything else you would add to that?
Trustee Ratan, then Trustee Ray.
Another thought to think about is if we start with a 3 and 6, does it set the precedent for never doing a flat raise across the Board from here on out? And if we're all okay with that, having these two levels, because once we do it once, we'll do it forever. But we probably won't go back to a flat across the Board. It's just something to consider. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Trustee Ray.
Yeah, I have a question nobody's going to have the answer to, but I want to kind of throw it out there just as something to think about. And that is, you know, we saw something earlier in, I believe it was in Dick Carter's report, about how every dollar invested in education, community college education, returns twofold. Are the out-of-state and international students who come here staying here to contribute to the economic engine within Johnson County or the state of Kansas? Because to me, that would be more of a justification to, certainly to, you know, make sure that we're providing an affordable education for everyone. I don't know the answer to that, neither does anybody else, right? But I think it's something to think about, you know? Are we, as we think about making education affordable for out-of-state students, are they taking that education and then going back and contributing to another economy? Or are they staying here? Because if they're staying here, that's money well spent, right? And again, I share the concern that's been echoed here about what do we do with our enrollment numbers if we start, you know, really increasing? And I, what do we know? So I'll ask a question maybe somebody does know the answer to, and I should know the answer. What percentage of our students are Johnson County residents?
70% by residency and 62% by revenue. It was in the committee packet, but not in the Board Packet. 70% of our students, our credit hour, by credit hours, are Johnson County residents. 62% of the tuition fee revenue, tuition and fee revenue, is from Johnson County residents because they're paying a lower rate. Mr. Chair, so I may, I'll try to short-circuit this a little bit. I think it's been a good discussion, and I'm going to do what I think, as a Board member, I ought to do, which is to, if I don't know the right answer, I'm going to defer to the professional staff that we have, the President and the Cabinet. And so I'm going to move that we adopt the budget guidelines as presented, including the tuition recommendation of 4% across the Board. And if I get a second, then I will add one more comment.
Second.
She's been moved by Trustee Musial and seconded by Trustee Ratan.
We have not studied, as a Board, what our tuition rate ought to be, what the differences ought to be. We've done it, as Dr. Bound said, it's gone over, some years, I know, Mark, I think when we raised it a dollar a credit hour back in 2016-ish, we raised it $2 out-of-state. But we've, we've... I got in trouble once because I suggested, as Melody made, that our tuition policy seemed to be haphazard. That was 10 years ago, Dr. Bound. It has nothing to do with your administration, but I got in trouble for that. But I've never felt like we really tried to break down, okay, our in-county rate is this, compare that to everybody else, and we're the lowest. What is our out-of-county rate? How does that compare to others? And the reality is, I think, most Kansas community colleges don't charge more for out-of-county because they are desperate for that enrollment. They also don't charge a property tax outside of their county, which I don't think they can do now, but they can do differential tuition. But they don't do it because they're afraid it's going to hurt their enrollment. I mean, we're in a little different situation in the metro area. But I think, you know, that's another topic for the new Board that Trustee Ingram and I will leave to them. But I'll accept and support the administration's recommendation at this point.
Thank you, Trustee Musial. Any further discussion on this topic?
Again, just trying to get to the root philosophy of how we even settle these rates. Why would we even have a Kansas resident versus a metro resident? Can it even be collapsed into three, and they pay the same amount? Just things I just don't understand why we segregated Kansas from metro.
At least I'll take an attempt. Actually, Janelle, why don't you go ahead and do it?
Well, I mean, just geographically, I don't, the states, the whole state, and the metro is just the surrounding counties. I don't think I'm answering your question, though.
I'll try.
Yeah.
What I believe is the reason behind it is we do get some state funding as well. And so because we get some state funding, they're given a little bit, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the history is that we first started the metro rate seven-ish years ago. Before that, if you lived one foot out of Kansas in Jackson County, you paid the full out-of-state rate. And so that, we're giving a break to those ZIP codes that are, you know, bordering us. And it's been beneficial. We've gotten students who will come here and I think will hopefully stay here.
Yes.
We've made education more accessible for those in Jackson County. And I don't know if we have CAS and CLAY or whatever, but, so we made that move. What you've suggested would be another bigger move, which would, if they moved them all down to in-state, and I think we'd get some pushback from Topeka on that.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it goes into Johnson County, Missouri. It goes fairly far in ZIP code. We go by ZIP code, don't we? By random example, yes, sir.
And if I may, and I appreciate your question, and it makes sense. I love simplification anytime you possibly can. But the idea of the metro rate, almost anybody who lives in the metro has probably worked and lived on opposite sides at the same time. And so we are so intermingled, it's so important to keep the metro rate because of that. We reap benefits from it across the Board, whether you're hiring or working or wherever you're living.
Not to belabor this, many times, when I've had the opportunity to speak to students, they have spoken about how important that metro rate was to them, to even thinking about Johnson County Community College because it seemed like a special rate that they could take advantage of, that in a lot of other institutions, it was simply an out-of-state rate. And like you said, I mean, I grew up on the Missouri side, born on the Kansas side, grew up on the Missouri side, back to raise my family on the Kansas side. We are very intermingled. And that's why I think just a universal rate like the administration's recommending is what I would support because I think our metro people are going to go back and forth for years. And so we're investing in our metro just as well as we are in the sacrifice and the commitment, the investment that the county has made in this institution. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Chair, one more piece of information.
Kansas, Ottawa, Kansas?
One more piece of information. I've looked at the budget book, Rachel. I found it online. So in 2023, the median home value in Johnson County, so the median home paid $403 to Johnson County Community College. So that's what I keep saying. That's a significant amount that makes affordability for that household harder because they have contributed to that. But I, as I said, I don't have great feelings either way. I can make arguments on both sides, and for that reason, I'm going to stick with the administration's recommendation.
I'm going to call the question. Thank you all for the discussion, however. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes 6 to 1. Trustee Musial.
Let me hearken back a little bit historically. When we raised tuition $1 six or seven years ago, there was an incredible firestorm of controversy that led to ugliness ultimately on this Board. And so I really appreciate what Janelle and Rachel and Dr. Bound have done here, and that discussion that we just had that reflected thoughtful, reasonable differences and discussions. And I have to say that because at the time, I thought that the firestorm over a dollar increase, which I think at the time, our average student took 7.5 hours, which meant you had to give up two lattes at Starbucks per semester. And Mickey tells me it's more than 7.5 now, so I don't want to use that number. Anyway, thank you for that discussion about tuition. It was all relevant and thoughtful. The next item, we had items from procurement from Jim Fiker, Executive Director of Procurement Services. The first one with respect to the comm building rooftop solar. It's a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the proposal from MC Power Companies in the amount of $236,383 with a 10% contingency of $23,638 for a total amount of $260,021, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Trustee Musial and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion on this point? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes 6 to 1.
The next item is with the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve a proposal from Squeegee Squad of Johnson County for a base year in the amount of $98,700 and a total estimated expenditure over the life of the contract of $545,380. That is for window washing services on campus. Squeegee Squad of Johnson County is the incumbent, and if I remember right, was the low bid. So I would so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Trustee Musial and seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion on Squeegee Squad? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Final recommendation is a contract increase for the GEB renovations that we're familiar with since we were kicked out of the Board chambers. It's for an additional $650,000 to the original $4.3 million renovation approved by the Board in March of 2023. This would, the original contract was issued to GPSKC for renovations on the first floor. This would bring the new total to $5,013,845. This expands the original scope of the project to include renovation of restrooms and drain line repairs by utilizing GPSKC, who is currently on-site with equipment, materials, and labor. It will provide consistency of project management and vendor ownership regarding warranty work. GPSKC was the low bid under the March 2023 award. Tom explained this to us, I think, in detail. These bathrooms have not been touched most, for over 10 years, and the drain lines that go under the building are older than that and are in need of repair. And so we're probably going to spend that sometime in the near future anyway, and we might as well spend it while we have everybody on campus and finish that building in the right way. So I would so move.
I'll second.
The motion has been made by Trustee Musial and seconded by Trustee Ingram, never to be done again. Any discussion?
I would like to say thank you for the bathroom renovations.
Come back just for the new bathrooms.
On record.
I was consulted. You're welcome. I have no idea. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion?
I do have one question, and I hate to put Tom on the spot, but I'm going to bring this up every time we do bathroom renovations. Is there an opportunity in this renovation to renovate with a unisex bathroom included in the renovation?
I can actually, go ahead.
So we did look at that option, and it was going to cost us an additional $20,000 to do that. Plus, on top of that, we would lose additional fixtures in the room. So we did really dig into that to see how we could possibly do that. There will be more privacy in the bathrooms because the doors, the stalls will be...
All the way to the floor?
Well, within four inches or so of the floor. So there will be a lot more privacy, but we, it was cheaper to stay with the current configuration.
Can you tell me what the closest unisex bathroom would be for that building, for the, what is it, OCB?
Yeah, there's one just about, oh, probably 40 feet away.
Okay.
It's just, there's a single-stall restroom there.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Appreciate that. Sorry to put you on the spot. on the spot.
Thank you, Tom. Where are we?
I had moved approval.
I think we have a motion.
Any other discussion? Sorry. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Trustee. The next item on our agenda is a report of the Student Success Committee by trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Student Success Committee met at 11:15 a.m. on Wednesday, December 6th. Information may be found in the packet on pages 36 through 40. The Student Success Committee has reviewed the proposed Fairness in Women's Sports Act policy 318.03. The proposed policy complies with requirements set out in the Kansas Fairness in Women's Sports Act. We do have two recommendations tonight. The first one is regarding this. It is the recommendation of the Student Success Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the Fairness in Women's Sports Act policy 318.03, as shown subsequently in the Board packet, and I will make that motion.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Ingram, seconded by trustee Musel. Any other discussion on this?
I think I'll note for everybody, we don't have a choice.
Right.
This is state law, and our policy has to follow state law. So there are probably differing opinions about whether that was a wise statute to pass, but we don't have any choice here, and I think everybody understands that, that when they see that we adopted this, it was mandated.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I also like that. I'm going to oppose this based on, out of principle.
Thank you, Madam Trustee.
That's the only thing I can do to oppose it.
Any other discussion? I will share trustee Smith Everett's disdain, although note fairly early on my own comments that I suggested that we pass it in my mind in an effort. I believe President Bill Clinton floated the Defense of Marriage Act forward 1996 ahead of, ahead of an election. It is a political issue, so we might as well address it. I don't like it, but I do concur with trustee Musel that we have to do it, and I think we need to do this to protect our administration and staff, and I'm sorry to anybody it harms or offends, but we have to do what's in the best interest of the college. And I will note, I thank those that drafted the change in policy, that I believe the last sentence of the proposed policy statement states that if if the act is repealed, superseded by federal law, or otherwise determined to be unlawful, which it will be eventually, this policy will terminate without further Board action. So it's unfortunate we have to call out a minority and pick on them and have to bully the majority, but there we are. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes five to two.
Thank you. The Student Success Committee has reviewed the recommended changes to the tuberculosis testing policy 321.01. The recommended changes generally clean up language and remove the option to hold transcripts and diplomas as a consequence if a student is not in compliance with the policy to be consistent with college process. It is the recommendation of the Student Success Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the tuberculosis testing policy 321.01, as shown subsequently in the Board packet, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion on this point? Any discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And final is an update. Joy Rhodes, professor and department chair, provided an overview of the fashion merchandising and design program, including faculty degrees available, community support and involvement in transfer and articulation agreements. She highlighted enrollment and course completion rates. The JCCC Fashion Collection is a repository of garments and accessories which preserves, educates, and celebrates fashion and local history. Goals of the department include continued preservation, expanded facilities, and showcasing the collection through community engagement. Mr. Chair, that concludes our report.
Very much.
Welcome.
The next item on our agenda is a report from the Nominating Committee and the man, the myth, and the legend, trustee Musel.
I still thought I got paid for some of this, or I wouldn't have agreed to serve on this. Trustee Ratan and I constituted the Nominating Committee that was approved by the by the Board last month to talk to Board members, to survey them about their interests, and to recommend positions for Chair, Vice Chair, Treasurer, Secretary, membership on committees, and then our liaisons between the Foundation, KA, Kansas Association of Community College, Johnson County Education Research Triangle, and the College Council. What we did with with Dawn's Brain and her background was to do a survey that each of you took, and including trustee-elect Greg Mitchell and trustee-elect Valerie Jennings, to figure out what committees would you like to serve on with a first, second, and third choice, and are there liaisons that you particularly wanted to serve on? And everybody got their first choice of a committee. I believe that's true. We also tried to balance the committees with a a senior person, somebody that was ongoing in the next next board, and then a more junior member, in this case, maybe Greg and Val. And we did that on the board, on the board committees. Because of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee has been has been molded into every other committee, we've included three people on both Management and Finance and on Student Success to expose more trustees to more of the decision-making process. And you have that in your Board packet, that the most, the avoidance of our effort was with respect to Chair and Vice Chair. As happened two years ago, we had two very good candidates for Chair and Vice Chair, and I think the Nominating Committee at that time, and I don't know if I was honored or not, I can't remember, was ended up nominating both of them with the notion that whoever is elected Chair, the other person is elected Vice Chair. The Chair and Vice Chair would automatically serve on the Audit Committee, and then we have the elected Board Vice Chair also serving on J-Cert if the Board, if the majority of the Board adopts this this slate. So I think the first thing we have to do is, and Caitlin's got ballots, is circulate ballots with respect to the nominees from the Nominating Committee for Chair, and those two nominees are trustee Laura Smith Everett and trustee Melody Rail. I can't remember if we take nominations from the floor. I suppose it'd be appropriate if there are other nominations for for Chair. Mr. Chair, we ought to entertain them?
I think, and I'm going to bunt the caution and due process, we should open the floor to nominations. I agree with and approve of your nomination, but are there any other? I think it's appropriate to ask for any other nominations.
I do.
Yeah, please do so. You want to be speaker?
Yeah.
I guess, are there any other nominations for Chair? I guess two people aren't here. It's hilarious.
I actually do have a recommendation in the form of a motion, I guess.
Go ahead.
That would lead to the vote. It is the recommendation of the Nominating Committee that the Board of Trustees vote by ballot for either trustee Smith Everett or trustee Rail, with the trustee receiving the most votes selected as 2024 chairperson, and the trustee receiving the lesser votes elected as vice chairperson. If I get a second, I'll so move.
Second.
We, this has to be, we have always used a secret ballot, but it is a public vote. So I have been informed by our General Counsel that I will read the results of the voting, but the, your ballot is secret when you, when you fill it out, right?
Kind of.
So, yeah, you need to sign your ballot. So would you pass out the ballots? I, I think if there's anybody that has any comments, Mr. Chair, that would be appropriate, too. I mean.
Yes, thank you.
Do we need to vote on the motion?
You should.
I think we need to.
Has there been a motion? There's been a motion and a second.
A second, we need to.
Motion has been made by trustee Musel and seconded for the minutes here by trustee Ratan. Any discussion now on trustee Musel's motion? This is why early presidential candidates did not campaign. Okay, any discussion? I would rather not discuss this also. Let's do it.
We need to vote.
I think we need to please distribute the ballots.
We need to vote on the motion.
No, we need to vote on the motion, so we can vote on the ballots.
All those in favor, please signify. Thank you very much. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The, independent of the chair, the ayes have it.
Thank you. We can just have one. You win everything. Turn and start.
I bet you win all the drawings, too.
That's why I do that, right? I learned it long ago.
This is a bad time to announce. I need to use restroom.
Bet you a woman wins.
Nice. I did like the idea of combat of some kind. That sounded kind of interesting.
I was recommending rock, paper, scissors.
Maybe thumb wrestling. I don't know.
Thumb wrestling. That might be a little more equitable, because I'll lose to arm wrestling.
Rock, paper, scissors was the final game in the Squid Games, if you watch the Squid Games reality show.
Rock, paper, lizards. Rock, paper, scissors, lizard spa from Big Bang Theory.
What does it say? Yeah, what is it?
Where they make fun of community colleges all the time, so.
Mm-hmm.
Do they?
Yes.
Penny went to a community college.
It's from the press.
Mr. Chair, this is not a, something I relish in any way. The ultimate vote is five for trustee Rail, two for trustee Smith Everett.
Yeah.
It's a penmanship work. Don Ratan, trustee Smith Everett, trustee Smith Everett for herself, trustee Rail, by Lee Cross, trustee Rail by trustee Rail, trustee Rail by Nancy Ingram, trustee Ingram, trustee Rail by trustee Musel, and trustee Rail by trustee Hamlin. So with a five to two, that would make trustee Smith Everett.
All right, we'll go Hamlin.
Hamlin.
Second time this week, just so you know.
Yeah.
Rookie of the Year 1990.
By our motion, that would elect trustee Rail as Chair and trustee Smith Everett as Vice Chair.
Okay.
Now, the rest, the rest of the slate, I'm going to go ahead and read it so that it's it's out in the public, even though it's in the public packet, but Treasurer Mark Hamil, Secretary Don Ratan, Audit Committee is the elected Board Chair and Vice Chair, Board Governance Chair would be trustee-elect Greg Mitchell, and trustee Don Ratan. Employee Engagement and Development would be chaired by trustee Cross, and trustee-elect Valerie Jennings would be on that. Management and Finance would be chaired by trustee Hamil, with trustee Cross and trustee-elect Mitchell as members. Student Success would be chaired by Don Ratan, with with members trustee Hamil and trustee-elect Valerie Jennings. Legal Steering is the Chair and the Vice Chair. The Foundation Liaisons would be trustee Hamil and trustee-elect Valerie Jennings. Kansas Association of Community College would be trustee Cross. Johnson County Education Research Triangle would be trustee Smith Everett, and the College Council would be trustee Don Ratan. And so it's the recommendation of the Nominating Committee that that slate of officers, committee, and liaison assignments be approved, and I would so move.
Second.
If I may, and I always forget how to do this. Could I ask or request a slight amendment? And that that would be, I suppose, as the incoming Chair of the Employment, Engagement, and Development Committee, might I request the gentleman trustee, trustee Hamil, could I ask you to perhaps give up Student Success and be on Employee Engagement and Development Committee with myself and trustee Val Jennings?
Yes, I'd do that.
I'm asking, we seem to work well. I think you have more management, and frankly, perhaps you've employed more people than I have, so I would welcome your insight.
I would definitely do that for you.
So that the administration doesn't slip stuff by me.
I would definitely do that.
I'm kidding, but kind of serious.
I would withdraw my motion and instead state that it's my motion that we accept the Nominating Committee slate with an amendment that trustee Mark Hamil move from Student Success to Employee Engagement and Development.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Second. Can I second it? No. I'm chair.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Musel and seconded by trustee Laura Smith Everett. Any discussion here?
Did you want to talk about J-Cert?
Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Any questions about it?
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you to the Nominating Committee for your service.
One thing I'd like to say is to thank Caitlin for chasing down everyone and putting together the forum. So thank you, Caitlin. We couldn't have done it without you.
It's like when a song ends in church. The next item on our agenda is the President's Recommendations for Actions, and we'll begin with the Treasurer's Report by trustee Laura Smith Everett.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the Treasurer's Report can be found in your Board packet on pages 42 to 52. Board packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ending October 31st, 2023. Some items of note include on page one, which would be page 42, the general post-secondary technical education funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college, and ad valorem tax distribution of $1,294,927 was received from the county treasurer during October and was distributed as follows, you know, on your, as you can see under Board packet. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending October 31st, 2023, subject to audit. I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Laura Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Musel. Any discussion on the Treasurer's Report? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Now we have the President's Monthly Report to the Board.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Chair Cross, trustees, and to the college community. I'd like to to read something to you that I prepared for this evening. Dear colleagues, the Board of Trustees and I have agreed to part ways, and as a result, I am resigning my position as President of Johnson County Community College effective January 2nd, 2024. There is much to love about Johnson County Community College and the Johnson County and Kansas City region. I am confident that the JCC, that JCC has a bright future ahead, and I will miss being a part of your future success. As I reflect on our work together during my three and a half years as president, I believe that there is a great deal for which we can all be proud. We continue to plan and work towards full implementation of guided pathways. One of the early steps in this work was the implementation of the new academic planning tool, Plan My Classes. Our math faculty have implemented multiple measures of placement into college algebra, and the results for concurrently-enrolled high school students this past year were staggering. Enrollment in Quickstep Plus or College Algebra in high schools across the county increased by 55%, and course success rates increased by 67%, resulting in 549 more high school students successfully completing college algebra than in the previous year. In an effort to increase equitable access, we provided financial support to Johnson County high school students who couldn't afford the tuition for JCCC courses while still enrolled in high school. In fall, college now enrollment increased by 10% in 2022 and another 20, and another 6% in 2023. Thanks to everyone's focus on teaching and learning, retention efforts, and on attracting students, enrollment has increased for each of the past four consecutive semesters or terms. Our partnership with Johnson County Mental Health-
Our partnership with Johnson County Mental Health in 2022 has allowed us to better serve students experiencing mental health challenges. The protocols and decisions we made throughout COVID allowed students, faculty, staff, and community members to safely come to campus, enjoy our services, and progress as students. In October 2022, we received reaffirmation as a League for Innovation in the Community College Board Member College. We implemented a shared governance structure that built upon academic branch council, adding staff council and college council. We are far from perfect, but all three groups are functioning and providing good avenues for listening, understanding, engagement, and voice. As a result of JCCC's shared commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, we dedicated the necessary resources and launched a new inclusion and belonging office. JCCC has had three positive state budget years, increasing by more than $6.4 million in new state funding. Earlier this year, we received visits from both S&amp;P Global Ratings and Moody's Investor Service. S&amp;P Global Ratings increased our rating from AA+ to AAA stable, and Moody's rating remained stable at AA1 stable. And our annual financial audits were once again clean. We have raised more than $10 million in philanthropic support to the JCCC Foundation and secured thirteen point seven million in federal, state, and private grants during this period. We have improved our facilities to create even better learning environments and working environments. We completed the design and renovations of the $40 million recreation of our science laboratories and classrooms. We are in the final months of renovations to relocate student-facing functions to the first floor of several of our buildings, increasing access to vital student resources. We secured the funding for a new CDL range that will allow us to double the program's capacity. And given final approvals in Edgerton, we will break ground in January. In my commitment to engaging with faculty and staff across the college, we have regularly held listening sessions known as conversations with Dr. Bound. I've had the opportunity to work with many leaders across the region in addressing community, educational, economic development, and workforce development needs and priorities. And it has been a privilege to serve on the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce, the Overland Park Talent Council, the Olathe Chamber of Commerce, the Olathe Regional, excuse me, Overland Park Regional Medical Center Board, United Community Services of Johnson County Advisory Council, and the KU Edwards Advisory Board. Over the years, I have loved attending countless JCCC Cavaliers boarding events and student performances such as musical concerts and plays and fashion shows. I've had the great honor of singing the praises of this college to numerous community organizations and participated in many graduation and pinning ceremonies during which we have recognized the work and achievement of our students. I appreciate the opportunity that the board of trustees provided, allowing me to become a part of the JCCC family. And I appreciate the ways in which you have made me and my family feel welcome over the three and a half years. You've broken bread with us. You've embraced the number one Cavaliers fan, Michael. And you provided us with much to be proud of. I will close this letter with the way I close each of our college-wide president's addresses. Take care of yourselves. Take care of each other. Take care of our students. And take care of JCCC. Best wishes, Andy Bound, President.
Thank you, Dr. Bound. I guess at this time, I'd like to say thank you. Sorry I came to this. You have numerous accomplishments here. Is there any? Any words of praise or anything any trustee'd like to say? Trustee Musel.
Well, I will try. March nineteenth, 2020 was when we voted as a board to hire Dr. Andy Bound as the next president of Johnson County Community College. We were in a room where it was myself, Dr. Joe Sobchik, and two technical people who had wired something together that had nothing to do with Zoom or Teams or WebEx or anything else, but it was our first meeting in the middle of the start of a global pandemic. And Dr. Bound and his family came here, and he started in July, living out of a hotel for months, moving his family here. I am sad that it has come to this. And all I'll say is I'm proud that we made the choice in March of 2020, and I'm proud of Dr. Bound, how he has handled this. That's all.
Trustee Rail and trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. Thank you and your family for your service to this wonderful institution. You could not have come on board at a more difficult time. And there have been many hurdles along the way. But I want to tell you, our first interaction was in the context of faculty negotiations, and it was, it was clear to me from that first meeting that your compassion for others is unmatched, and your dedication to student success has always permeated everything that you do. Thank you for that, and I wish you only the best.
I believe trustee Hamill was before me.
Trustee Ham.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. I'll try to sum up everything I can. I just wanted to tell you, I've appreciated your commitment to the college and your family's commitment to the college, and your love for the students, faculty, and staff. It's very apparent, and everything you do on campus and the amount of time you spend here, and your family and yourself being super fans of the college. We've had numerous great conversations. We haven't always agreed on everything, obviously, but I know that you have a beautiful heart that the college has also got a benefit of, and you've accomplished a lot of great things on campus. I want to thank you for all the time you put here.
I'm trustee Smith Everett and trustee Ratan, sorry.
Thank you. Dr. Bound, thank you so much for your commitment for the three and a half years you've dedicated. This is a really difficult job, and it requires every ounce of blood, sweat, and tears. So thank you for that sacrifice that you've made to commit to it and to see out our mission and values, and we wish you the best.
Trustee Ratan.
I came in and you were my president. So I've learned a lot under your leadership, and I appreciate seeing someone, as everyone has echoed here, with such a big heart and so much love for education and this community. So thank you for showing your leadership and showing me as a trustee how to come in and love this college. I wish you the best, and I wish your family the best, and look forward to staying in contact with you.
Trustee Ingram.
Dr. Bound, thank you. We've had the added opportunity to do some traveling together, and not together, but to other community colleges, and I particularly with the Friday calls that we've been a part of. I have seen your, the respect that others have for you. And I think that is just always something that will stay with me is, you know, seeing you initially pretty quiet and not speaking up, and I'm thinking, I know he's got it in him, and by golly, as you started to gain a little more traction, I saw others looking to you for your advice and your leadership. And I think KACC is better because of that, too. So you brought a lot to us, and I appreciate that very much, and we all wish you well.
Dr. Bound, I've had the distinct pleasure and privilege of working, I think, as close with you as trustee, former chair, Musel did. And you're a man of high integrity, and you've helped maintain the dignity and reputation of this college, and most importantly, the success of our students. We thank you for how you handled COVID. I don't believe anybody in our college community died. It was a political choice, the one this board made, to stay masked longer than any other municipal institution I know in the county. And that was a difficult one and one that I know you and I took heat for. I had the privilege of reading that letter before that you wrote, and, you know, I concur with the accomplishments that have happened, and happened under your leadership. I've been a reference for you before, and I will be again. I've told you that. I think that you are absolutely an asset to the community college movement, and some college in the future is going to be extremely lucky to have you, and I thank you for your service. The next item on our agenda is new business, and we had discussed, I discussed previously with I know one trustee and counsel that we probably would accept the resignation at the end of an upcoming executive session, or we could do it now. So. Later. Very good. So is there any new business to discuss? Seeing, hearing none. The next item on our agenda is old business. I don't believe there's any old business unless someone has it to take up. And the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, in which regularly monthly reports and recommendations have been made by the administration, and they're in your board packet. Is there any item any trustee would like to remove from the consent agenda to discuss individually? Seeing and hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda in its totality?
So moved.
Motion's been made by trustee Laura Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion here? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, no. I suppose the chair that the consent agenda is approved unanimously. The next item on our agenda is for executive session.
Mr. Chair, a point of personal privilege, may I make some comments before we go into executive session while we still have some folks here at the college that I want to recognize? Would that be appropriate?
Oh, yes, and I meant to as well. I guess, please go serious.
Well, I, no surprise, this is a meeting that I didn't anticipate in July of 2011 when I first joined this board. But it's here, and as you might expect, I have some final thoughts. I'm going to try to cover them relatively brief, but there are things I do want to cover. I have to start with inspire learning to transform lives and strengthen communities because that should be our touchstone, and I hope it's the touchstone of the next board and continues to be that of faculty and staff. We know everyone says it's an honor and a privilege to serve on this board, and there's only one reason for that. It's true. It is an honor and a privilege, and I hope I've served honorably and in a manner that respects the trust that was afforded to me. There are many thank yous to share. I'll start with my fiancee Barb, my daughters Liz and Maddie, who were here earlier for the reception, my law firm, my many friends who encouraged me when things weren't perfect and reminded me that successes and credit are always to be shared. We're here for one reason, our students, lifelong learners from all walks of life and all generation, life and all generations and backgrounds. Students expect us and challenge us to serve them well. As we saw with Liz earlier, they embarrass us and humiliate us at least once every board meeting with their successes, but they inspire us to keep plugging on, and no job or service that I will ever do will give me the joy I feel at graduation, whether it's GED, my favorite, or CLER, or Police Academy, or the full college. So I hope we all keep students as our focus and serve them before we serve ourselves. To the trustees I've served with, we all know there have been some challenges, particularly my last term as chair, but I can honestly say I learned something of value from every trustee that has served while I've been on the board. We have almost always managed to disagree without being disagreeable. We have debated without dissension, and we have supported the college with enthusiasm regardless of our political ideology or our partisan loyalties. And I hope the new board commits to continuing that tradition, not as a burden, but as an expectation. To the staff who make this place run, many of you here, those in the back of the room, our police officers, thank you. I've met so many of you over the years, and you work so hard for our students that we owe you a debt of gratitude. I especially want to speak to the president's office staff, and Caitlin and Liz and Christina, I don't know if they're still here, and Terry Schlitz before them. They are what helps trustees keep somewhat on time and know where their final reception is located. For the leadership on the campus, especially the cabinet, deans, department heads who make the tough recommendations and decisions, who run interference for the board at times and who tackle board members when appropriate when we get out of our roles, you are the glue, and I'm proud of the work and courage that you do. What you do is not easy. Never lose the professionalism that leads you to recommend honest, best policies and practices regardless of the controversy. To our faculty, you are great teachers and great caregivers to our students. I've said before that my respect for teachers stems from my mother, who taught nine grades in a one-room schoolhouse in the 1940s and 1950s. I hope my questioning and commenting help focus on campus-wide and community-wide issues and priorities. I have appreciated being tested by minds as bright as View, Leica, Harvey, Argo, and Williams. I also recognize that some may be counting down the days until I'm off the board. It's twenty-five, by the way. But I hope more than a few will acknowledge that I've tried to be available, consistent, and fair in dealing with the multitude of issues that end up between the board and faculty in a college of this size. I leave the board comfortable that I have made that effort, and no one here thought I would forget taxpayers. We serve at least 600,000 citizens in Johnson County. We decide how to spend their money. One of the greatest tests of character, in my opinion, is how you handle other people's money. I ask that someone on this board be the voice, eyes, and ears of reasonable taxpayers and realize that the resources of businesses and families, like the resources of this college and our students, are finite. Tax and spend with care, please. Finally, I acknowledge the three presidents who have served JCCC while I've been on the board. No one, no one, no one knows the rigors that they face. Everyone in this room or listening and everyone in this community on campus can think we know, but we don't. Twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, the president is the face, the voice, the decider, the scapegoat, and the cheerleader for this college. No one who thinks they know the scope of that job or thinks they have the answer fully grasp what it is like to have so many stakeholders offering and demanding so many solutions, ideas, and priorities often in conflict with one another. With today's announcement by Dr. Bound, this college will be searching for a new president for the third time in my twelve and a half years. As I watched the congressional hearings involving the presidents of Harvard and Penn and MIT and the aftermath, I thought it was a fitting microcosm for leading any higher education institution. In a recent article titled "The President's Many Roles," published by Insider, Inside Higher Ed, the author opened with this. "A boxer, a minister, a police officer, a psychologist, and a Nobel Laureate walk into a university auditorium. The head of the faculty senate says, 'What is this, some kind of joke? Where's our new president?'" The head of the search committee replies, "No joke. We couldn't find one person who could fit the leadership profile, so we hired them all, and we stayed in budget." When you come up with your next leadership profile, it will be of the perfect human being that you're seeking that you will not find. In higher education generally and JCCC specifically, if we are to survive, not just survive, but prosper, we stakeholders need to look in the mirror and ask ourselves, are our expectations of the current and next president fair and realistic? Is our support sufficient to create an opportunity for success? Am I being fair in pressing my view of the world on this person? As a board and a teaching and learning community, we challenge all three of those presidents to be accountable, as we should, but it is incumbent and necessary to also give them the authority to make decisions and the space to make mistakes. Leadership requires that. If we don't exercise that grace as a campus and particularly as board members, this jewel will tarnish, maybe only a little, but maybe a lot. will tarnish, maybe only a little, but maybe a lot. In closing, I will remember these 12-plus years as some of the greatest of my life. I will forever be proud of what the college has accomplished over that time while acknowledging that we have fallen short on occasion, too. Life is filled with imperfection. It is our effort to get better, no matter how good we think we are, that counts. That's at least enough and probably more than I need. I am forever grateful. Thank you.
I thank you, trustee Muzel, for interjecting that, and I had meant to make a motion under new business to recognize that both you and Nancy Ingram were recommended and named trustees for life by the American Association of Community College Trustees. So, if I could make a motion to just have the minutes reflect that and have a second, that would be terrific.
Second.
A motion's been made by myself, trustee Cross, and seconded by trustee Laura Smith Everett. Thank you, to recognize that trustees Greg Muzel and Nancy Ingram have been recognized as trustees for life by the Association of Community College Trustees. That should be a period, excuse me, and then any discussion on this point, and then I'll give Nancy, trustee Ingram, a chance to speak if she wants it.
Sure.
Any discussion recognizing trustee Ingram and trustee Muzel? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you for that resolution being passed. Do you have anything?
I, well, I do, and I actually typed some things out because as I was trying to out-guess you and what you were going to say, mine is completely different, but thank you is really not enough. I went back to look at a file that I have and you're going to now know that I'm cleaning out my files at home. It was a file from when I taught at Emporia State and it was called "My Last Lecture," and I took a song from Dirty Dancing, the movie, called "The Time of My Life." And I read it to my students, very, very, you know, "I've had the time of my life and I owe it all to you." And they looked at me and then I went on to the next line, but I had told them that I had written it. So then they figured out, she's talking about a song from a movie. That's how popular it was at the time, but the truth is, I really have had the time of my life. And it was an honor and has been an honor to be elected to this seat. But as I have been quoted, the seat is not mine, it belongs to the college, but the honor has been all mine. So with that recognition, a warm welcome to Greg Mitchell and to Valerie Jennings. First and foremost, a most heartfelt thank to my husband, Steve. No details, we have been a great team for more years than you can imagine and I'm sorry that he is not here. Board work is about the we. Each of us brings our own perspective, our own questions, our own ownership of the role we play as ambassadors to our beloved JCC. With the mission of JCC, C inspires learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. We are charged with serving in the best interest of as many as possible as we collectively make decisions. What an honor to work toward the greater good. One of my earliest memories was attending a foundation meeting in Galileo's Pavilion where Jay Anno was speaking about our sustainability work, its goals and its practices, and it was that moment when it truly clicked with me. Our Alathus School District had just begun a green program in its 21st Century Academy programming and the work in strengthening those relationships with our K-12 partners continues today, as well as our JCC commitment to sustainability. And for me, that was just a really proud moment of knowing we were all going to be collaborating together. In running for a second time, my words included, "JCC has long earned the right to be considered a first choice for our local students." That resonates with me today and I thank you all for that. JCC and its collaboration with KACC brought new meaning to my participation as trustee. Special thanks to all of you for the opportunity to represent you and our statewide organization. We must continue to shout the importance of our, your, community college with respect to Johnson County and collectively all community colleges across the state and the impact we make. We should all be so very proud. The committees upon which we serve allow us to take a peek at the work on the inside, challenge yourselves to always consider who needs to be at that table, whose voices are not represented. You might call it shared governance, it is common sense in my world to hear from those potentially affected by change. They may not be the decision-makers with whom that responsibility lies, but hearing the voices of many cannot help but serve us all well. Special thanks to all of you here this evening. There is no way to express my thanks to each and every one of you who have become more like friends and family as we run into one another all throughout our community. We've shared our lives like family through the good times and the not-so-good times. To our cabinet, my best wishes as you move forward each and every day. Your leadership through COVID, likely the most challenging of recent times, was imperative to our moving forward in a strong fashion. Thank you for making the pivot so seamlessly. Remember when pivot was the word? It was just the word. To our faculty and staff, your smiling faces will be missed and the special connections we've shared at JCC will be memories I will hold on to forever. Your leadership is vital to this college and you are so appreciated. A special thanks to Terry Schlitz and Joe Sopjic, who nurtured me along eight and a half years ago, and Anna, our sweet admin. To team Caitlin, Christina, Liz, you are all the best. I'm just going to leave it there. And to Melody, Mark, Don, Laura, Greg, Lee, we are part of a very special bond. Love you all and remember always, they don't care how much you know until you know how much you care. And I'm sorry, but having seen that up close and personal, JCC has a bright future and remains in very good hands. And I apologize, I knew I would cry. I cried as I wrote it, so it made sense, but my best to you all. The choice is not, not once did I word the use "I," and that was very intentional as I wrote this, as I wrote it. I'm not reading that. We are a board. Thank you all for all you have shared with me of your best selves. Onward.
Thank you very much.
Love you all.
Any, I guess customary, I remember doing it with Dr. Cook, any comments for trustees Muzel and Ingram? Trustee Ingram?
We all begged you not to leave.
That's true. Trustee Ingram?
Individually.
I'd really like to thank you guys for your tutelage and all the help you've done and all the leadership you've brought, not only for the college, but for myself as well. And honestly, I've honestly grown to appreciate you each almost daily with what you've taught me and expanded my mind and seeing things in different perspectives. And, you know, your ability to connect dots is extremely important and, you know, the fact that you can go through past reports and past years and put that information together so we can see the dots ourselves has been extremely valuable and it will be missed and I don't know if any of us are up to the challenges as you've done it and I appreciate it. And your ability to teach heart, your heart and your ability to teach grace is beautiful and I know the college is better because of it, not only, you know, not only on the board that you helped us, but also out here for everybody else and I couldn't say thank you enough to both of you.
Anybody else? Trustee Smith Everett?
I remember very fondly as a new board member or as someone even sitting in those seats hoping to be a new board member, how often current board members would point to and refer to former board members and the history with them or the things they had done or the decisions that have been made with that group. And I don't think I relished it until very recently. Understanding that we have all sewn our thread into a beautiful tapestry that is still being created by this great place and that each person's impact and each person's weaving has led us to where we are now and how really critically that important that was for me as a new trustee and getting the mentorship and development from both of you in very different ways, in an ongoing and earnest attempt to make this board be the most effective it is because every board member needs that development and support and you two provided it and still do, and I don't know what I will do next month when there isn't the two of you to bring up issues, to call, to refer to. But I know that in coming years, I will refer back to the time I've had on this board with the two of you and the thread that we've woven together. So, thank you for that.
Trustee Rattan.
I said a few comments at the reception, but once again, thank you for your integrity, your heart, and your skill that you brought to this board and are always generous with sharing it with the rest of us. Thank you.
Trustee Brea?
Yeah, I just want to say I know what I'm going to do next month when I have a question and the two of you aren't around and that's, I'm going to pick up the phone and call you. So, I just want you to be prepared for that call. Thank you both.
I too made comments earlier and I like Greg Muzel more than he thinks I do and I'll leave it at that.
That scares me.
There is something to be said for your comments about someone carrying the flag, carrying the voice of, you know, the taxpayer, and I appreciate that and truly one of the reasons why I asked you to run again and waited, asked you to run again. And yet the confidence of several communities in our county that we need to make the foundation and the college go, and I appreciate you greatly. The trustee Ingram? I'm asked to run and serve as my vice chair and who supported me when I was up in a similar election two years ago and I've got one love of my life and I've had two kids with her. But a quote I thought of from one of my favorite movies, it's the X-Files movie, 1998, and Special Agent Mulder says to Special Agent Dana Scully, "But you saved me, as difficult and as frustrating as it has been sometimes," you're expletive deleted, "strict rationalism and science has saved me a thousand times over. You kept me honest and you made me a whole person and I owe you everything. You owe me nothing and I don't know if I want to do this alone or without you and I don't even know if I can, but I appreciate you and you're with me in, I'd say, over 90, 95% of the meetings I was in as chair of this board and I appreciated you being there and it was to keep the confidence of the rest of the board and members of the community that you were better networked with than me and I appreciate you being there. And the seven of us have made decisions this past two years and that was with the support of counsel and staff and administration. We've had disagreements with many, or some in the administration and yet we appreciate all of them, all of them, and I thank you for being there with me. I could not have done it without you."
Oh, my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. It was an honor.
Any other comments, questions for the good of the order? Or a hugger again? All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding a personnel matter, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session and the executive session will last for the much debated time of, I thought, either 45 minutes or an hour. I'm open to that. My instinct is to say for an hour, frankly, as we discuss a path forward quite candidly, and I'll take any input on that time. One hour. Beginning at, can we do, is 8:15 too late? That's too late or is okay?
8:10.
8:10.
Okay, very good. 8:10 PM and ending at 9:10 PM, at which time, open session will resume at this location for those present in person. Invited to join this executive session are all board members, Mr. Chris Gray, Kelsey Nazar, and Trina Ricketts. May I have such a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Muzel and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We'll see you back here at 8:00, 9:10. Thank you, Sam. We're back at the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees meeting after an executive session in which no action was taken and we discussed a personnel matter with counsel. I believe now we need to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I'm moved to amend the agenda to include consideration of acceptance of the resignation of Dr. Bound.
I'll second.
A motion has been made by trustee Muzel and seconded by trustee Ingram to amend the agenda to accept the resignation of Dr. Bound. Do I understand the motion?
To add that to the agenda.
To add that to the agenda. So now we need to add this to the agenda and then vote on the resignation. All those, any discussion on adding to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. Now I entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Bound.
So moved.
Motion's been made by trustee Rail and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Muzel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Dr. Bound.